Jeremy, are you in the office?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Broadcasting. Website.
Jeremy, will we see the live stream on this screen? Or do we have to go into the other link?
If you go onto the website, you'll see the broadcast.
Hello, everyone. Want to do a sound check. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, just like that.
About another minute here and then we'll get started. Marian or Jeremy, will I be able to see everybody that's present or no? Specifically looking for board members to see what I have.
Do you have it in grid view, Jess?
I do.
So if you go to Participants, on the very top it says 24. And you press that, it will tell you who's there because you don't necessarily see all 24 in front of us.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we'll do a roll call.
Yeah, Chris just joined too.
Okay, great. Okay, it's 6:30, so we'll get started here. If we can start, Karen is, I'm sure, present. I'll do the call to order. Jay Brady?
Yes.
I'm present, Jay Loyakono. Jay Murphy?
Present.
G Odell? H Randall?
Yes.
K Van Bergen Budo?
Herb's there, in place.
Thank you. There's a very small flag behind me, if you can see it. But please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God.
You probably could only hear me, right?
No, everyone's still on, someone else.
Just have a quick message. Tonight's meeting is for the school board to hear the draft plan and have discussion about that plan being presented. Tomorrow evening, Tuesday, August 11th at 6:00 PM, the White Mountain Regional School District School Board is holding a special meeting to include further discussion of the proposed plan tonight and have a public comment session before the board approves a reopening plan. All board meetings will be done remotely. The board cannot express enough gratitude and appreciation to Superintendent Anastasia, the district leadership team, our staff, steering and reopening task force committees, and their work in getting us here with a plan during such an unprecedented and unpredictable time. And to our educational community for their continued support and understanding as we all get through this together. The draft plan, a community input form in the stream of tonight's meeting can be accessed on the district website at sau36.org. There is a red tab on the very top of the homepage titled "Reopening Information." Both meetings' agendas can be found under the blue round button titled "School Board" from the homepage as well. I'd like to reiterate that this is a draft plan and subject to change. We hope giving access to the document will allow everyone to follow along with tonight's presentation. These next couple of meetings may become lengthy. If anyone needs to take a short break, just let me know. We find ourselves here after 10:00 PM, the board will take a quick vote to continue the meeting. Could I have a motion for approval of the minutes from 7:27-20's meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Herb Brandle. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim Brady.
I have a comment. Dave Halmunder is in the call to order and the motion. Karen has removed them from the minutes.
Thank you. Was Greg Odell listed on those two? Because I think we had an issue. Welcome, Greg.
Yes, he is.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions or comments for the minutes of 7:25? Ready to vote by roll call. Jay Brady?
Yes.
Jay Murphy? James Murphy approved the minutes from 7:27?
Jim, you're muted.
We couldn't hear him when he wasn't muted. Give me a wave if you're good.
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Jay Murphy? G Odell, approval of the minutes?
Yeah.
H Randall?
Yes.
K Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Approval of the manifest we've done via email. Don't have any adjustments to the agenda. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Jess. So, tonight we're here to recommend a return to school plan. I want to reiterate that this has been and continues to be an emotionally charged task with endless variables that make it very complicated to operationalize without knowing who will be returning to school for both students and staff. With us tonight is the steering committee, which is comprised of our district leadership team, and in addition, Dr. Ford, our local physician, John Moss, our town health officer, and Stephanie Cameron, the White Mountains Regional School District NEA president. As you know, we've taken recommendations from the reopening task force, and now we bring our recommendations to you. The health and safety of our students and staff are our top priority. We know our plan must be achievable, clear, and flexible. And given the inherent risks of opening school, we have decided on a phased-in plan or approach to prepare ourselves to be adaptable to possible changing conditions. We welcome and look forward to the community and staff feedback now, now that we have a plan to present to you. I'll summarize the highlights of the plan briefly. However, the district leadership team has crafted a presentation that explains what it will look like at various grade levels, schools, what the facilities needs are, instructional implications, special ed implications, transportation, SEL work, sports, food services, operations, and of course, the health and safety measures that will be followed. In our guiding beliefs, we state that safety is first and foremost. So given this, we have mandated that all social distancing in classrooms is six feet. Classrooms may have as few as eight students in them in order to adhere to this regulation. This will be discussed in detail at the principal's presentation next. And you have already taken action on mandating masks in the schools. So when the health team talks about their recommendations, you will see that they have created detailed procedures for all COVID-related scenarios. Also, families will have the choice of 100% online instruction or a hybrid model of both online and in person. In our guiding beliefs, we understand that staff and students with underlying health conditions will be accommodated to ensure their safety. Those will be considered individually and confidentially. This is our recommendation for starting the 2020-2021 school year. From September 1st through September 10th, the staff will receive intense professional development on best practices in SEL, developing plans for determining academic gaps from last year, and the use of platforms and programs to make online learning easily accessible for parents, students, and staff. And Stephen will elaborate this on his professional development section. Then on September 11th and the week of September 14th through the 18th, we begin a phased-in approach for students who enter the building. The principals will explain this, but the focus will be on building routines, COVID-related protocols, orientations, and community building. Students will be in their building only one day during that week. Staff will be reaching out to families and students throughout the week. On September 21st, both online and in-person instruction begins. It should also be noted that the schools will be deeply sanitized on Wednesdays and Saturdays. So these are scenarios that we crafted. All pre-K three-year-olds will come to school two days a week in person from 8:30 to 11:00, all at the Lancaster Elementary School. All pre-K four-year-olds will come to school two days a week in person, a full day that is slightly shortened, all at Lancaster Elementary School. Kindergarten will have a hybrid model, two days in person, three days remote. Grades one through four will be in person four days a week, with Wednesday being the flex remote day. And grades five through 12 will be a hybrid model, two days in person and three days remote. In addition, all targeted at-risk children, for example, children who do not have access to the internet, children on educational plans, and CTE students, may attend school in person four days a week. And then on page four of our plan, we have the color codes for reopening. Red represents 100% remote. Orange is our transitional plan, and this is our slow opening for September 1st through the 18th for both staff and students. Yellow is our hybrid model, where most kids are in school two days a week and receive online instruction three days a week. And Wednesday will be the flex day, and that will also be clarified by the principals. The first to fourth graders will be in school four days. And then blue is when we're fully open four days a week with a Wednesday flex day. We would transfer into red with guidance from DHHS, CDC, the governor's order, or et cetera. When talking to Dr. Ford, he recommended that if the school's positive COVID cases exceed the community's cases, it would be an indicator to close schools. I am going to turn this over to Scott and Mike for the elementary middle-level model presentation. Thank you.
Marian? Marian, could I ask you a quick question? So I might have printed out a previous draft. But you had said that grades five through 12 will be two days in person and three days remote. Are they not having the Wednesday flex?
The Wednesday is, I considered that remote because it's flex. I'm going to let the principals tease that out a little bit. We're still teasing out Wednesdays, but they may have, okay? Yep.
All right, good evening, folks. This is Mike Cronin. Scott Holmes and Jake will also be joining me for this portion of the presentation. We've broken it up into a couple of different sections, and all three of us will be speaking to you throughout. If you have some questions as we're going along, please don't hesitate to give the high sign and weigh in, please.
Mike, before we jump in, is everybody able to see the presentation in full screen on your computer? Or at least half-screen, that you can read it? Yes, okay, thumbs up. All right, perfect. Thank you.
All right, Scott, so we'll go to slide number one. We'll use that as our jumping off point. So as Marian had said, this has been a very, very challenging process. I think professionally, none of us have been faced with a process as challenging as this in the past, and I hope that we never have to again in the future. But we have done the best to pull together stakeholders, take a look at just about every document and white paper that's been put out there by associations and professionals, as well as plans from across the state, across the region, the country, and even have sat in, a number of our DLT members have sat into some presentations about what's going on internationally in an effort to try and create a plan that is safe, productive, and equitable in returning our students to instruction during a time that a year ago, none of us would have ever imagined we would be in. We will say that there were a number of entry points that we could have taken for this plan, and one of the struggles we had was settling on what that entry point would be. Tonight, we're going to put in front of you a proposal that we feel is a jumping off point. This is not set in stone by any stretch of the imagination, and there are fine points that need to be worked out from here. Once the board and community have an opportunity to weigh in, there is a significant amount of work that still needs to go into making sure that this can even get off the ground, and if it can, if it can run and sustain itself, again, in a safe, productive, and equitable way. So moving on to slide two. For an overview, one of the things that has been a real challenge for us in the past two weeks in particular has been the very diverse building layout or building architecture that we have here within the district. Each one of the three buildings is sized differently, and classrooms are not all of the same size across the district and even within buildings. We've got some very optimal spaces to work with, and then we've got some very challenging spaces. Whitefield in particular seems to be challenging across the board as the classroom sizes are significantly smaller than what you'll find in Lancaster. And so as a result, we have tried to utilize the capacity of each building to its maximum, but knowing that we're going to have some subtle differences in plan implementation across each building just because of the physical layout of the way things look. Again, we have calculated our classroom capacities based on a six-foot social distance recommendation, and we've brought in some architectural professionals to work with us and give us some options and take a look at it from an architectural perspective. Rob Scott may talk a little bit more about that in his portion of the evening. But I'll turn it back over to Scott and to Jake to talk a little bit more about slide number two.
Thanks, Mike, for that introduction. So when we talk about what plans work and what don't, and taking a look at where we are compared to other areas that are rural, one of the things that keeps cropping up is this parent choice in the educational process during this global pandemic. It's something that we really have to pay attention to. We're lucky that we have that ability with about, you know, just over 1,000 students. And you take a look at staff and talking about what they need and what their needs are compared to being in the building versus teaching or working remotely. So that's something that you're going to see as we go through this presentation, that there is a lot of choice. And we really feel like that's important as we move forward in meeting the needs, the diverse needs of everybody in our district, both parents, students, and also staff. Jake?
Thanks, Scott. You know, as we go through this with this plan that we're laying out, we thought it was important to offer the option for students to have the opportunity to be in person, no less than two days a week and upwards of four, depending on some certain circumstances. You know, Wednesdays and Saturdays are designated for the deep cleaning for all the schools. So, you know, as our flex day Wednesday, there will be no one allowed in the building as we do that cleaning. And then in order to make this all work in person at all, you know, these reduced class sizes have to happen. And, you know, we're going to follow the recommended social distancing and health guidelines as we go throughout that. And I think that a big thing for everyone to begin to try to wrap your mind around is, if people are in person, what this looks like is vastly different from what school used to look like. Everyone will be wearing masks. Class sizes at the high school will not exceed 12 people per class. And there will be no, you know, wandering the halls. School will look very different in person. And people have to realize that as they go about making a decision about whether or not to send their children back to school. You know, and one of the things that we do want to harp on and offer is, you know, if we are, you know, at a point where we need to do this remotely, students with unreliable internets or, you know, are at risk, they will be able to come four days a week and access the internet in the buildings and access an education from that way.
So what is it going to look like? And Jake has given us a bit of a taste of that, and I have to reiterate and reinforce what he's told us. The idea of bringing students back to the building is something that all of us want to have happen. But we need to do so within the context of some very rigid guidelines in terms of social distancing and health. And in order to do that, we have to change the way that we do business in the buildings. The six-foot social distancing guideline is planned for, and because of that, many classrooms have reduced capacity compared to last year. We cannot get the same number of students in a given classroom if we maintain a six-foot guideline. And as Jake said, at the high school, there's a maximum number that they're looking at. Whitefield is looking at a smaller number, somewhere between six and eight students in most cases. And Lancaster has some larger square footage, which allows them to create class sizes that are a bit larger than Whitefield. But again, they are not going to be what we saw when we left in March, and we need to keep that in mind. Masks are required per the school board's directive in common spaces, and whenever six feet cannot be maintained, both indoors and outdoors. And so that has significant impact over the way things look and the way we operate within the building. Again, classroom layouts based on the six-foot distance between seating, as well as making sure that we've got a six-foot distance when we can between staff members and students unless we're wearing masks. One of the things that this requires because of physical space is reduction in bus seating. W W Berry, after looking at how buses are designed and sizes of seats and capacities, are quoting about 24 students can ride a bus at a given time. And that's with students in assigned seats, so that if we do have to do contact tracing, we have some reliable information about who was where and when. And masks will need to be worn on buses and at bus stops as well. As Jake had said, this is significantly going to reduce the mobility of students around the classroom and around the building. We are going to be emptying out classrooms of just about everything but student seating and student desk space. Shelving will be emptied. Additional alternative seating will not be able to be made available. The traditional rug that students sit in for their morning advisory will not be available in this kind of a model because of social distancing needs. And then one of the things that has been discussed in previous meetings is what would recess look like? We all recognize and we all value the need for physical and outdoor activity for our kids, our staff, our community, and we value that, and we need to work that in. But what that looks like needs to look different than what it did again back in February and March before we left. I don't have the details on what that looks like, but I do need to express that we need to look at how do we distance, how do we use equipment or not use equipment, and masks or no masks are all part of that equation. So in summary, and to bring us back full circle, it's going to look very different than it looked like back in February and the beginning of March of last year. In order for us to get kids in the building, we have to do it within the context of some pretty significant and some pretty clear mitigation strategies. We believe we can put those strategies in place on paper. What those look like in actual day-to-day is going to be very different than, I think, what we hoped it would look like, what we want it to look like, and hoping that it does. what we want it to look like, and hoping that it doesn't have to look like that for very long.
All right, so that brings us back to parent and guardian choice. So the two options that we have in front of us for this model is in-person learning and then online learning. And it used to be called remote. We've made the switch to online learning. You'll hear that as people's terms change in their minds that it'll be both online and remote. So as we move forward through this, just think that when you hear online or remote, it's very similar. We're trying to change and improve how we do remote learning or online learning now. See, I'm going to do it even, so my apologies, but those are really our two choices within this.
And Scott, I would even add to that, you know, especially, you know, it's something that we've all talked about in each school. What online learning will look like come the fall, if that's the choice, will look vastly different from what online looked like from March to June. You know, it was a week to plan that in March, and we can recognize and appreciate the shortcomings of what that looked like. There were some successes and some things that we learned that we would continue, but overall, I think it's important to note that, you know, not only will in-person learning look vastly different from it has in the past, that online learning will also be more in-depth, be more fruitful, and definitely be a different learning platform than what students experienced in March and June.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. And then Jake, I believe this is your slide?
Yeah, well, that's for sure. When we talked about this choice, you know, for sure, we wanted there to be some options to experience some different things. So if a student has chose to do in-person instruction and then something changes and they do not want that, they can opt out and immediately pivot to online instruction, so you know, the next day sort of thing. You know, if a person wants to opt to in-person instruction, they've been previously doing the online at the elementary and middle school level, they have to wait until a space is available, given the guidelines and the distancing recommendations. However, at the high school, they will not be allowed to opt into in-person instruction immediately. They'll have to wait until the next quarter begins.
So I'll speak, I spoke briefly about transportation, just a couple of, maybe just to reiterate. 24 students to a bus is what we've been quoted by WW Berry. The family would be asked to screen the student before boarding the bus because we do not have the capacity to screen students on the bus. Physical distancing and masks would be required at the bus stops, and social distancing or physical distancing and masks with assigned seating would be on the bus. One of the things that we've been discussing just the past couple of days is we know that bus transportation for some families requires a student to ride one bus in the morning and a separate bus, a different bus in the afternoon, or perhaps one bus for one week and a different bus the other week. That's going to be a challenge, and it may not be possible for us to have that level of flexibility with bus transportation under this system. More information in regards to setting up ridership will be coming out within the next week to two weeks so that we can establish that, but this is one of the details that could make this plan very difficult to implement and get off the ground, and a real challenge to keep running. So as people are thinking about their choices for the fall, whether they do online instruction or whether they choose in-person instruction, transportation needs to be a significant thought as part of that. And I would say any flexibility that a family has in regards to transportation is something that you're going to want to be considering.
All right, so as we're jumping into what this model looks like, K or pre-K through 12, it's important that we talk about equitable and how we've arrived at this point of this plan being in place. So we really had to take a look at, and it's going to go back a little bit to the physical space, the physical layout of each school, completely different. What we can do at Lancaster is drastically different space-wise than what Whitefield could offer, and then also factoring in what is the high school doing so that we are equitable across the board. As we go through this, it's really important that we think about the bigger picture of what we're trying to do for our entire district and how we can provide as much in-person learning as possible for parents that choose that. So as you take a look at this plan, the plan was crafted on 100% of the students coming back and 100% of the staff coming back. We know through our pre-survey that that's probably not going to happen, but we needed a plan to make sure that it was equitable, especially between Lancaster and Whitefield. So as we're going through that, just think about, we factored it on 100%. We know that some won't return. We don't know how many. So we may be able to increase the amount of in-person learning once we have data from parents on who wants to return and who wants to stay in remote learning. So at the pre-kindergarten level, again, Marion touched on this real quickly, but again, we're going to have both three-year-olds and four-year-olds at Lancaster for the entire district, and this is due to space for that equitable services across the pre-K through eighth grade. We have more space here. We feel that if we were able to have both the Lancaster and Whitefield preschool staff work together, that we could provide a better program in a safer environment with the size that we have. So that's, again, three-year-olds would come on for two days a week, and then also four-year-olds would come for an extended, almost a full day, and that really matches that full date at 8:30 to 2:30 of what we already offer at both the schools. At the kindergarten level, this is where we start to break out back into school of residence. So wherever students are supposed to be going to school, that's where they will. And we feel that we are able to provide a kindergarten program that is appropriate by breaking them down, each school into four cohorts based on that assumption that 100% of the students are going to return. So as we're planning this, it's really important to look at the numbers. Whitefield, I believe you have 40 students enrolled in kindergarten. Is that correct, Mike?
I'm sorry, that is correct.
Okay, so that's, and in our conversations, that was a very large class for Whitefield at the kindergarten level. So just taking a look at how do we do that, and how do we offer that? And Lancaster is right around that 35 child rate, and that's changing just as enrollment changes and families move in and out. So what we did is we knocked that into four cohorts per school to be even, and providing Monday and Tuesday in-person instruction or Thursday and Friday instruction based on what cohort that works. I think that we'll be able to work with families, so if it fits better that they come to in-person instruction on Thursday, Friday, we can shift that around and provide that. And also having that Wednesday flex day in there so we can provide a clean environment for when students come in, and also just providing teachers with some time to get ready for that next level of cohorts coming in.
Scott, can I make one comment about kindergarten?
Absolutely.
Specific to Whitefield, one of the things Cheryl Plumley has been doing since last week has been looking at the rooms in the building, the sizes, particularly to this cohort of kindergarten students. 40 is a very healthy number. But because it's 40 and we're in a COVID-mitigated environment, we've got to figure out how to break them up into healthy class sizes. So we're looking at some of the larger spaces within the building in order to set up four kindergarten cohorts of about 10 in Whitefield. So it's going to require some physical movement of classrooms if we move forward with this type of a plan.
All right. Could I ask on, so if 100% of kindergartners in both Lancaster and Whitefield families choose to attend in person, we can accommodate 100% using that social distancing?
We could accommodate 100% at Whitefield and Lancaster, correct. We would have to, we would be using different spaces in the building than we would be using at this time last year. We would be looking at possibly the use of the library, possibly the use of one of the larger rooms that is typically used as a middle school classroom in an effort to try and accommodate class sizes of 10.
But Jess, that's two days a week in person and two days remote, yep.
I'm just saying, I mean, I think it was Scott that mentioned earlier, or Jake, if students were changing from online learning to opting into in-person, that we couldn't accommodate the capacity and there would be a space need for some groups, but it doesn't sound like kindergarten is one of them.
Kindergarten at this point is not necessarily one of them, okay? However, if our increase, and oftentimes we do see that towards the end of the summer, this is a very different summer, but we do need to keep in mind that we do have some other grade sizes that could make the addition of another student after we get started pretty challenging, and they may need to wait until a space is available for some reason.
All right, and Mike, I'm going to turn it back over to you for grades one through four.
Thank you, sir. So as with kindergarten, grades one through four housed in their homeschool. We're not going across buildings at this point. Grades one through four can be in all day, four days in person, and one day online. Again, that one day online would likely be the Wednesday, and we need to reexamine how to use that Wednesday flex day, and make sure we're using it productively. And that's a conversation that's being had through the instructional group that Steve Nylas has been working with. Again, these students would be organized into much smaller class cohorts. Now we're starting to look at class sizes in Whitefield, and I'll ask Scott to speak to Lancaster. But in Whitefield, now we're starting to talk about class sizes that are more along the lines of, I'm going to say, seven. We have some classrooms with built-in millwork that takes away from desk space and floor space. And so those are situations where we would hope to be able to accommodate 100%, but at this point, I cannot guarantee that we can accommodate 100%. We've mocked up a couple of classrooms to take a look at what six-foot distance looks like, and as I said, on average, about eight kids to a classroom doesn't give much room for anything else in the classroom besides student seating and student table space.
And at Lancaster, we're able to, we're a very conservative number as 11 to 12 in our elementary classroom. So definitely doable here. And like I said, that's a conservative number based on the drawing that we got back that if for some reason it had to be more than that, which our class sizes don't need to be more than that, but with that six-foot rule, it could be a few more students.
So just to clarify, for grades one through four, it would be a four-day in-person if that student and family opted to do in-person learning. There's no real choice, or is there between online and in-person learning? For say if a third grader wanted to do two days in person and two days, three days ultimately remote or online learning, that's not an option?
We didn't consider that in this proposal because of the importance of that first through third grade level and those foundational reading skills and the math skills that are so important that by, you know, that shows that if they're not reading on grade level by the end of third grade, they have a really hard time of catching up. So we really want to ask as many families as possible that are comfortable sending their kids in, that we have them for those four days of instruction. And the fourth, yeah, and that fourth grade group is also lumped into this, and we really pushed to have that in this grouping because of what happened last year, right? We missed almost a half a year of instructional opportunities. So we do know that they're going to be a little bit more behind, and that's why we're able to stretch. And the numbers allowed us to stretch from that first through third to first through four.
Jessica, the other thing that we've talked about, and again, nothing here is set in stone, but in terms of creating consistency and creating that student-to-teacher relationship over the course of the year, if we're trying not to cross a staff member's instruction between in-person and online at the same time, okay? So a student who is in-person is going to have an assigned classroom teacher. A student family who's chosen to go with an online approach at the beginning of the year is likely going to be assigned a different teacher. That teacher would stay with them through the course of the year unless miraculously everything blows through and we're in a very different place and we bring everybody back in the building where they're supposed to be. But we're looking at certain staff members being dedicated primarily to the delivery of online instruction with online cohorts. And so making that, I'm going to be two days in, two days online, and then flex day online could make it very challenging for the student for the delivery of instruction.
Thank you. I also wanted to ask too, is grades one through four, which I don't want to move ahead necessarily, but the only cohort or group of grade levels that are doing the four days in-person available?
At this point, at this point in the presentation, yes. But I think that it's really important that we consider that idea that we planned with 100% in-person, which we know some won't be, so we may be able to stretch that. We just, without having that data from parents on if this is a model that they're going to choose or not, we just can't, we can't do that. Lancaster probably could space-wise, but when we go back to that equitable opportunities for both students that, you know, attend Whitefield and Lancaster, we had to make that decision that that's where Whitefield's size restrictions cut us off at, so that's where we had to go.
Let me intervene just a little bit, Jess. There will be children that can come four days a week, and those are the kids that have educational plans, ones that don't have internet access or some CTE perhaps. So those kids that are targeted at risk in addition to grades one through four.
Okay, thank you.
And as Scott had said, how this plan actually unfolds will be dependent upon what data we get back from staff and what data we get back from the community about where they feel they fall at this point. Knowing that there are folks with medical conditions that may not allow them to be in the building no matter what, knowing that the environment is going to be very different than it was, transportation is going to be more challenging, they may opt not to attend at this point, and I think that is a legitimate choice.
Right, it's difficult obviously to look at a plan but not have the data that drives the plan and makes it be available to be implemented, so yeah, I get that.
And thus our challenge in putting something on the field to see if it will play. Mr. Randall, my apologies.
Yeah, sorry. First, I wanted to just make sure I understand. So we're saying that, let's say you have a, well, a child of any of the grades, and they've opted to do the online learning. They're, let's say, in third grade. Their teacher would be strictly focused on online learning. If they transitioned to in-person learning, they would actually have a different teacher and vice versa. If somebody transitioned, okay, so, all right, I get that. The other question is sort of, maybe you'll touch on this later, but to get an idea of what does it actually look like through the week for, well, this kind of comes, I guess, with the later grades, so maybe you'll touch on this. But I'm really interested to know how it will look like when we're talking about groups of students being in the building for two days and then two days remotely with the flex day. So in the days where these students are at home and learning online, are they working with the same teachers? And are the teachers, you know, live streaming lessons for the remote children? Or are they working asynchronously on assignments?
So Herb, what I will, what I will say is, Steve Nyliss is working with a group of staff, and, and Steve, you, you may want to save this for your portion, or you may want to, to speak briefly to this, but what that online instruction on the two non-in-person days looks like needs to be aligned with what went on in the classroom in-person, okay? So it, I'm going to say it will be synchronous in that the same teacher is working with the same, same students, except the delivery platform has now changed from in-person to online. That alignment, and I'm going to use the word synchronicity between what's going on with that cohort who's opted for in-person instruction and what's going on with that cohort who opted for online instruction. There needs to be synchronicity and alignment with those two cohorts and those two teachers. So there may be a different teacher delivering the full-time online curriculum and instruction, but that is going to be aligned and collaborated with, with the other classroom teacher who's in-person, and our hope would be some alignment with what's going on between the two buildings as well.
Okay, so, you know, I'll, I'll save my, I'll save more of that discussion for when we, when we move on, because it may be covered, but it, it struck me as a, as a question, so.
So we'll take a look at grades five, eight. Grades five, eight, again, are, are building-based, not crossing between the two buildings the way that preschool is, all day, but just as you had alluded to, now we're looking at two days in-person and three days of online instruction, and that's in an effort, in an equitable way to try and make sure that if everyone wanted to be in the building at some point, we can get everybody in the building. So because of capacity issues, we now have to cut back on the number of days that they can be in the building. We'd be looking at two days in the building with three out. Again, that flex day comes into play, but because two of those days are going to be online learning, that flex day is probably going to look very much like the other two online days. And again, when they are in the building, students will be organized into significantly smaller class cohorts than what we were seeing at this time last year.
All right, so on, on the next screen there, there's a possible elementary model schedule for both Whitefield and Lancaster, just so you can see the whole picture of what we've talked about on the days, and that's, there's a disclaimer that that's not set in stone, but that's taking all the information that we had in the previous slides and putting it into one without a whole lot of data. One of the things that I wanted to touch on here is that if we were to open with this plan and we had to move back into remote or online instruction because we had a rise in cases, this would allow the students that were on, in-person to actually have the same teacher and using a lot of the same programs in a remote setting. So it's just really important to note that, that we have thought about that, and how do we make a plan that allows for us to move in and out of the building if that has to happen, without getting into a big discussion if it's going to happen or not. But if that were to be the case, we are, we are trying to align that as much as possible, so there wouldn't be a disruption in programs that students are using.
So Scott, I'm going to just jump in there for a moment with the caveat that if this is part of the planned discussion and the remainder of the presentation, please just put me off, but my concern is less with the whole school closing and going to remote learning and more with individuals having to shift as they become symptomatic and need to wait out asymptomatic periods, teachers who are out of school for two or three weeks and back in, students who are out of school for two or three weeks and back in, and what that looks like. So if you've got that somewhere else in the presentation, I'm happy to defer. If it isn't, I'd really like to, to hear about those thoughts.
And I can't, yeah, I can't say that we've got, I can't say that we've got a level of detail to that point, Kristin, but it's a, it's a significant area that needs to be addressed. We know that the guidelines that have been given to us and folks from the Health Committee can, and have spoken to this, that if students are presenting with flu-like symptoms, cold-like symptoms, the direction has been, you got to head home, you got to get a negative test, you've got to quarantine. Contact tracing will then determine if there are others who need to do the same thing. That includes staff. That is a significant detail that still needs to be addressed in terms of whether or not this plan can get off the ground, and if it can, can it sustain itself?
And then the other piece that I didn't have right at the top, because I had to think about that for a second, is that's why it's important to have a learning management system, so if a student does need to go out, they still have access to what's going on. And then having that partnered online teacher that is, is following the same course of study that what they're doing in the classroom, that transition may, may be a little bit more bumpy, but it's still, it's still going to be available to that student because they're following the same scope and sequence, they're, they're following along, doing the same standards, and that's really important that we have that. So we haven't thought that out fully, but that you'll hear Dr. Nyliss talk about a learning management system in, in the near future, and I, I think it's really important that we, we do realize that we do have to have some things in place that we haven't in the past as a whole district, and I think that's one of them to address that question.
I, I would agree. I think with all due respect to what is obviously a whole bunch of work that's gone into this draft plan, we are far more likely to have individuals flexing in and out of our buildings than we are to have such a rise in COVID in our community that we would lead to a closed school. And if we don't have a good plan in place for what that looks like, I think we've got a huge gap. My perspective working in public health.
And Kristin, that, that point is, is valid and well-taken by us as administrators. Again, we're not pretending that, that this plan is, is the right one or that it's, it, we can get it off the ground. We've still got work to do, but it's an entry point to see if we can get something on the field at this point.
Can we, can we leave that slide up for a second? I just, I just want to make a small point. I mean, looking at this, one, one thing that would concern me as a parent, depending on the mix of children I might have, is looking at this in a grid format, you can see that some families are going to actually require childcare five days a week, even if they have in-person learning for, you know, two or three of their kids. So if you have, if you have siblings and they happen to fall within certain groups, you know, this plan, in fact, doesn't help them to return back to work full-time because they, they now have to wrangle childcare five days a week. So I just wanted to point it out because it's so obvious looking at this grid that, you know, I don't know how many families would be affected by that, but it would certainly affect some, I would imagine.
Herb, we've had that discussion in our groups when we were working on this, and we definitely would try to accommodate families. That would be one of the first things we would ask so that, so that we could align that best we could.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, looking at that as a parent, it sets off huge alarms.
Right, and, and for our staff members too, we have to take into consideration what's going to happen when you have staff members that their children don't go inside in the district, that, that live outside of the district and are working here and have a different plan for their children at home, and they just simply, that's impossible. They can't be in-person instructing at their job and having their kids at home at the same time.
You know, I think this is an important thing for us to acknowledge, just be really open and transparent about as the plan moves forward is, is precisely the issue Herb has just raised. A significant push to move children back into school buildings has very little to do with pedagogy and everything to do with childcare. And, and I think we just really need to be clear and transparent that that's a piece of what we're accomplishing by reopening our school buildings, and that's a piece of what I'm hearing from constituents. I have, have heard today from a, a parent who has said, "My family does not have the means to pay someone else to take care of our children." There wasn't really much of anything in that communication that I received that said, "My kids are desperate to learn, my child is behind on XYZ." It was about how the family is trying to figure out how to keep their heads above water and, and work and not have a huge expense for childcare. And I just think as a district, if we are not overtly acknowledging that that is a piece of what we are trying to fix here, then we're doing a disservice to our community members. I, I wholeheartedly believe our primary responsibility is to teach our children, but, you know, frankly, our schools have been asked for a really long time to do lots more than teach our children, and it feels to me like the strongest push of reopening our schools has little to do with instructional content and lots to do with all of the other socioeconomic factors that schools address.
Thank you, Kristin, very well said.
So as was mentioned by Dr. Anastasia, I think at the, the very beginning with, with the executive summary, the week of the 11th to the 18th would be designed as, as orientation in the, the pre-K through AID programs. It's very similar to what we do at the beginning of any school year, which is to receive students, build relationships, build community, teach everybody how to navigate around the building, make sure they have everything they need, and, and start the communication with families. That latter piece, the communication with families typically begins with the open house and works its way through the parent-teacher conferences in the fall, but it's going to take an earlier, more prominent role in a plan like this, so that during the week of the 11th and the 18th, parents, teachers, and students will be in contact with each other to preview these things. What does it look like to come back into the building? What are the, the most important aspects of safety? What are we trying to accomplish? Where is the help when it's, when it's needed and how do you access that? So we would have students in the building during that week of the 18th, but only one cohort at a time, and those students or families who've chosen a, an online approach would be meeting virtually with that online instructor to establish the same relationships and, and guidelines. Jake, we'll talk a little bit more about how that looks differently at the high school as he goes through his presentation.
A great transition, Mr. Cronin, it's like you planned it. I mean, that was just great. So hi again, folks. I'm going to start my part of the presentation off a little bit differently. I first want to acknowledge the number of people that have helped put this together at the high school, you know, from Patsy Ainsworth, Mike Curtis, Rob Scott, Janine LaBouny, you know, working with the union, just the amount of thought from a various number of people that have gone into this over the past few weeks is great. And then being able to then collaborate with LES and WES as well on some fundamental, fundamental things, it's been fantastic to collaborate with, with such a great group of professionals. The second thing I want to say is that our plan that we are laying out is not perfect. It is not detailed down to the, to the nitty-gritty, and any plan that we bring before you is, is not going to be perfect. It's not going to work for everyone, and we have to plan for the masses, not for the few. And so as we get into that, I just want people to remember that as we've put this together, you know, we know that there's kinks that need to be worked out, but we can't work out kinks yet until we know which direction we're going. So I know some of you are going to have a ton of questions about this and, and what it looks like on a day-to-day, just please keep in mind the amount of hours that have gone into this and that we know it is not perfect and we still have a lot to do. So I just, you know, I want to put that out there as, as we get started. And to, to my team, you guys feel free to jump in at, at any time as we go through this, so thank you, guys. So first and foremost, the logistics of stuff, you know, and recommendation from Jeremy, no ways to kind of get technology into students' hands as early as possible so that we can work out the kinks, you know, starting September 1st, you know, we'll communicate to families that these are the days for, days and times for students to come pick up their Chromebooks. So we'll start, you know, on Tuesday with grade nine, Wednesday, grade 10, Thursday, grade 11, Friday, grade 12. Obviously, if there's, you know, students that for whatever reason can't those days, we'll make special arrangements and we'll be in the building for students to pick up their Chromebooks. September 11th, kind of our first day back, again, at the high school, we'll, we will also have the same focus on, you know, connecting, building community, social-emotional development and that sort of thing. So what we'll do is, you know, we're, we're going to develop a, a whole school welcome-back video that we won't lot, we won't do live because Google Meets has a limit of 250 people, so we can't have everyone do that live. So we'll film a video and we'll allow students to access that at their convenience on that first day. We're going to start our students' wellness check-ins by flex teachers, so once again, whether in the building or remote, we will have teachers touching base with seven to 10 students like we did in March through June. We still have a tentative motivational speaker lined up through our Gear Up grant that's kind of up in the air if that still happens. If it does, you know, we will socially distance our Gear Up students in-person for those who want to attend in-person, and we can stream it virtually for, for others. Also, on that Friday, we're going to have some communications with parents and guardians and students, some virtual meetings to talk about what the in-person, in-person learning expectations are and how to balance that online learning expectation as well. So I'll talk about that a little bit more as we go. But really, the, the main thing is beginning that student engagement with their teachers, having those initial meets and kind of laying out, you know, what things will look like. And then for our big orientation week, you know, this is a, this was a, a last-minute change today, so Mary and I apologize, this bottom part looks a little bit different from what was handed out, but we're going to use this week to start off one grade level at a time. Originally, we had the freshmen coming in on Monday to kind of do their, you know, you know, our kickoff week, kind of our onboarding, they can meet their teachers, they can run through their schedules, we can talk about how different education looks like in the building this year, we can talk about all the new social distancing recommendations, they can meet with their teachers, they can meet with administration, but we have 139 freshmen currently registered, it's our largest freshman class in, in quite a few years. So we thought, let's start with the seniors and work out all the kinks on Monday, and we'll, we'll wait till Friday to bring that freshman, that freshman cohort in. So we'll do one grade level a day to kind of, for the in-person learning, if families are sending their kids back, you know, Wednesday, we know that that's our flex day, so we will focus that Wednesday on any student who will be online learning for, you know, the foreseeable future, we'll do some virtual orientations that day with them. So that just kind of lays out how we want to, how we want to work that first orientation week before we roll into phase yellow on our next slide here. So I've got two proposed weekly schedules for you, an A and a B, and as you guys are looking at it and all the questions are starting to accumulate, there's a lot of questions and answers still to work out because we don't know how many students we're going to have. But basically, Plan A will look like this. We will divide basically every class in half. So, you know, we have, you're either in Cohort A or Cohort B. You'll come to school, we'll still do our white day and our blue day. The downfall with proposed Plan A is students will only meet with their class once a week. Students will be in the building twice a week, but they're only meeting with a teacher for about 70 minutes. Now, we have the flex periods, two of them built in, so that there is more time to get help from teachers, but that direct instruction in a classroom for 70 minutes with a teacher in front of you, you know, each class is only once a week. Lunch asterisk next to that, we're still working on, you know, is that, you know, delivered from the cafeteria? I've been talking with Mel, and really her direction is, once we have a plan, we'll figure out what lunch looks like, and I have the utmost trust in that happening with the work that she's done over the past four or five months with all the lunch deliveries and that sort of thing. So I know at least lunch is going to work out well because Mel Stevens is in charge of that, so. And then we reserve our, our Wednesday flex days. So the second plan that I'm proposing, which is kind of a, a new one that, you know, we kind of threw in here at the last minute, Scott, if you want to go to the next slide.
Hey, Jake, I don't want to interrupt you because you're doing a great job, but say little Scotty Holmes is in ninth grade and he's in the A group, can you talk about what little Scotty Holmes' experience would be in that first schedule that we've got up? How that would work for me?
I would prefer to hold that question for a little bit, Scott.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you. So the other proposal is this, and there's an asterisk here because running this schedule is going to take some give and take from the school board. So basically, what we would do is we would run six classes a day. We would still do an A group and a B group because we have to keep class sizes down. We would still do an A group and a B group because we have to keep class sizes down. But basically, this would allow every student to meet with their teachers twice a week instead of just once a week. Still allowing for that Wednesday flex. You will notice, however, that in this model, we are not able to do flex blocks. So we're going to lose out on some opportunities there with students doing some work, building those relationships and that sort of thing. However, if we're talking about educating our children, you know, this at least gets them two times a week face-to-face with their teachers. With this plan, we would have to get some leeway from the board for, we wouldn't be able to offer all the classes that we currently offer. And what does that look like for credits and where do we have some flexibility and some leeway? So again, this is a beginning model where we know that we still have a lot of work to do. But if we're talking about bringing students back into the building and doing it safely, you know, we all have to be super flexible here. And that's what we're trying to do with these first two plans. So if we jump back at proposed Plan A, little Scotty's coming into the building as a freshman. We're going to have designated entrances for grade levels so that they can come in. Rob will talk a little bit probably with facilities. We've got maps that will be sent out with which direction in the hallways students will be allowed to walk, this, that, and the other thing. But little Scotty will, once he does arrive to school, whether it's by an older brother, whether it's by the bus, whether by his parents, he will get checked in and immediately report to his flex class. That's really just kind of like a holding point at this for basically a homeroom. So we can allow students, we know it's going to be longer to get everyone in the building. We will then, you know, we can fit students on either side of the hallway socially distanced. So he will move to his Block A class where he'll have no more than 11 other co-students in that class. And he'll get, you know, 70 minutes of instruction from his teacher. And then he will not see that Block 1A teacher again until the following Monday. So the teachers will really lay out what it looks like to get one day of instruction and then expectations of what learning looks like, accessing Google Classroom, the resource and assignments that will be posted there, and how to balance what that looks like. And then throughout the day, kind of moves the same way. We've got our lunches and figuring out where that is. We did build in a second flex period towards the end of the day so that we can, again, maybe do some more check-ins with teachers that you know you're not going to see. They can do some work. And then we end at 2:40 as opposed to 2:50 because we know it's going to take time to get students out to buses and dismissing. So questions on this first proposed model before we do some more information giving?
So I have just a real quick question. My recollection from when we looked at the program of studies last late fall, early winter, being on ed programming, I'm sure my timeline is a little different, is that some classes allowed for multiple grade levels to participate in those classes?
Yeah.
So what does that look like for the offerings at the high school?
That looks messy for the next few weeks of figuring out if this model is approved. You know, it's a numbers game. It's going through and finding out where we can move students around so that we can still fit reduced class sizes. But it's a process that has been thought about, not put into practice yet because we don't know what the approval plan is going to be. But it's going to be messy. It's going to be trying to, it's moving pieces around to try to fit those smaller class sizes. We also know that all of the classes offered in the program of studies are probably not going to be able to be taught in person. Some of them might have to be strictly online because, you know, we can't teach to two kids in person and seven online if that's how the numbers work out. So, you know, we're going to have to be flexible. We're going to have to ask our teachers to be flexible and our parents to be flexible as well.
Okay, because that certainly, that impacts things like what feels like a really strong recommendation coming out of the health team around cohorts and helping to feed into contact tracing.
We can do cohorts at the high school, the way that everything is, but it would, we would have to dismantle the system of how the high school's been running for years. The only way we can do it is by breaking them into the A and B day cohorts. And that's kind of how we have to lay it out if we want to bring students into the building.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I would like to, maybe just kind of returning back to my previous question because now it seems really appropriate. So, okay, so little Scotty Holmes goes to, on Monday, this is his White Day A and he meets with, you know, Mr. Jones, his teacher, on Monday morning, Block 1A. What is he doing at home the rest of the week? Is Mr., you know, is his teacher livestreaming lessons for class? Or is it all asynchronous work and assignments at home?
Correct. So this is really kind of like a collegial model where, you know, there's a Google Classroom that's going to be set up. The teacher's going to talk about what assignments will we do the next time they meet. There's going to be a ton of resources within that Google Classroom so they can get more content, whether it's teachers recording videos, whether it's, you know, them posting more resources for them to get. But there will not be, you know, they can do check-ins, you know, that flex day, obviously setting up some office hours with teachers to get extra help. But it's really those are your 70 minutes of direct instruction and then the rest is online expectations.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions about this one? We can jump forward, Scott, or Patsy, please feel free to hop in if you want to add anything. I'm sure I forgot something.
I would just like to, oh, Patsy Ainsworth, sorry. I would just like to reiterate that the way teachers use that 70 minutes will not necessarily be 70 minutes of instruction. It may be using, you know, some flipped classroom. So the video of instruction or mini lectures or seminars, that type of thing, is available for the student when they aren't meeting with their class. And then the class is meeting for discussion and some other work, doing some synthesis and that type of stuff. So it isn't what we normally envision of a traditional class, even that way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I actually like where you're going with that, Patsy. It's more consistent with what we see in higher ed with a lot of the online training programs and and degree programs where the actual kind of in-person session is more about coming to shared understanding and leveraging some of the learning that's happening in an asynchronous environment. It really does contribute well to a teach-anywhere, learn-anywhere kind of model. And there's actually, I shared a link with Marion earlier today about a pretty cool program that's going on at Plymouth State University that is teaching higher education faculty how to deliver educational content in that way. And their ACEs framework is actually being used in some high schools. So if it's, you know, I said to Marion today, you guys may be all over this. This might be a resource you already know about. But if you're not already aware, it is publicly available through the Colab and is kind of a neat model that helps address some of those those ways of teaching so that there is more equity and more accessibility for all learners, no matter where they are.
Thank you.
Scott, you can go ahead and move forward. Were there any questions about that B model? Great. Mr. Scott?
Thanks, Mr. Hess. Hey, good evening, everyone. So I started off with just talking about a couple of technical guidances that were put out by the Bureau of Career Development at the Department of Ed so that when we get to the next slide, you have some perspective into the thought process of, you know, what we came up with. So in early July, the Development Bureau put out a document called School Reopening. And number one, they emphasize the importance of collaborating with sending districts and keeping your regional agreements in place. And there is a bylaw in the regional agreement that says any change to the structure of the school day when it pertains to CTE should be made at the regional level. So that was one of the big things out of there. They also indicated...
Can I just interrupt real quick? Are there any provisions when you're in a global pandemic?
No, we're in like year 15 of a 20-year agreement. So 15 years ago, we probably didn't think we were going to be here. But the big thing is, is don't spring anything on our sending schools. You know, like the day before we open, I can't technically call Groveton and say, hey, you know, this is what we're doing. So. And we have met as a region about a week and a half ago. It was a Friday. And then we intend to meet again next week so that there's open lines of communication with our sending schools as well as Littleton where we are sending students to. So another emphasis is, take a look at programs that aren't centered around labs or shop spaces and consider them, you know, more so in an online atmosphere. And then reserve lab time for students. It is extremely tough to teach a kid how to weld through a computer considering probably most of them do not have welders at home. And then a second guiding document was around student self-transportation. And basically, it comes down to a district decision. So prior to the pandemic, the DOE frowned upon student self-transportation, but they turned that frown more into a straight-line face like mine. And that, you know, boards need to look at their policies and procedures that are in place. But from the DOE perspective, it would be acceptable for student self-transportation because they do recognize the reductions on school buses in order to safely socially distance on a school bus as we transport kids to Littleton and vice versa. With that said, if students are identified as self-transporters, the district would still qualify for student transportation reimbursement at a prorated amount. So those are AV1, AV2 payments that we get, you know, twice a year that get reimbursed to the district. Scott, you can go to the next slide. So for our students that go to Littleton, all indications right now, and they're currently sitting in their board meeting, but all indications are they are fully open. They begin school September 8th. And in my conversations with Al, they'll be receiving sending kids on Monday, September 14th. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Did I say Littleton? So our kids go to Littleton. They have a flex day similar to us on Wednesday where they intend to do some deep cleaning in their building. Littleton School is set up a lot differently than our CTE Center. It's new. It has updated HVAC systems. All right, so Jake Hess put in the chat, Littleton did vote to go back full-time. I guess he's watching it. But their building is new, their spaces are enormous, and they have the capability to socially distance kids in their lab settings. If you've ever been to their health science lab or their automotive lab or the building trades lab, these spaces are bigger than our gymnasium. So, you know, huge spaces with state-of-the-art HVAC systems. So they plan to take our kids. So if our kids opt for in-person, we are, you know, recommending in this plan that they attend Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Currently, we have 20 students signed up. And this is where that self-transport comes into play. We share a bus with Groveton, so we have budgeted for half a school bus as we split that cost with Groveton High School. So technically, we're entitled to 13 seats on that bus and Groveton, or 12 seats to that bus, and Groveton is entitled to 12. Now, they may not send 12 kids, which opens up some of our seats. But if they exceed four, we need to either A, secure a second bus, which, you know, bus drivers, there's a huge shortage of. Or B, we need to consider student self-transportation and what that could look like. So as far as CTE at White Mountains Regional High School, we also intend to start with our CTE kids September 14th, receiving kids from out of district as well as CTE kids that are in district. So we are recommending that a couple of our programs start online. And then we'll evaluate with the instructor, with our program advisory committee, and, you know, through communication with Region 3 and our school district, whether they need to have some in-person lab time. So JRTC, computer networking, and then criminal justice would be those programs that start out online. In-person, we are recommending culinary arts and welding. They have a minimum of two days in the lab, and they can teach some of the theory stuff online. Kind of like Patsy had explained earlier, that flipped classroom approach. And then environmental and sustainable science would be one day a week in the classroom or in the lab setting. And again, you know, the plan would be fluid through tons of communication. If there was a need to amend lab experiences for kids, we would definitely take that into consideration. So with that said, does anyone have questions in regards to CTE?
Yeah, could you give us, Rob, an idea of enrollment in CTE for us?
So right now, I haven't heard from Linwood and Profile yet. But from Groveton, we're expecting 10 kids. And from Lancaster, we're expecting seven.
Sorry?
Yeah, Littleton. What do I keep saying?
Lancaster.
Lancaster.
Sorry, Littleton is seven. So we intend to reserve, like we have done in the past, our first two blocks of the day for our sending school populations in accordance... What's that?
Our own student count for enrollment in CTE?
So I don't have that... Rough, we're probably looking at about 90 kids. Jess Russ was on vacation and they're still filling people's schedules, so. And some of our programs that have larger enrollments are welding, criminal justice, and culinary.
And welding in particular, I'm curious to the space needs and social distancing achievement in all of the CTE programs actually.
Yeah. So in welding, last board meeting, you folks approved for us to swing the welding boots.
Right.
You know, as a safety concern, so it actually helps us to socially distance them better. Also, in the Perkins grant, I am going to look to acquire a mobile generator welders so that kids, and it will serve two purposes. Selfishly, kids need to learn how to weld out in the conditions. You know, right now, they weld in a controlled environment and it's totally different when the wind is blowing. But secondly, it'll allow us to have some kids outside and clean fresh air to do some welding, you know, out there and achieve social distancing.
So, Rob, I'm going to follow up with Jess's question there because one of the other things we definitely heard about in the CTE presentations earlier this year were the crowded conditions around cooking stations in our current culinary setup. So only a tiny bit tongue-in-cheek are we buying grills for outside too because I think, you know, that, some of that space looks kind of scary too.
Yeah. Well, and since we are not catering anymore, well, we put it on hiatus, we will be able to, you know, have kids spread out more. So we have other pieces of equipment that are stainless steel that meet industry standards for, you know, food prep. So we can spread them out. The burners are still going to be an issue. So we will have to look at an alternative, whether we use, you know, hot plates like they use for Skills USA competitions, you know, or whatnot. So, you know, we will work with Chef, his program advisory committee, and leverage the Perkins grant to purchase any of those necessary materials. Any other questions?
Jake, would you like me to speak here?
I would love that.
All right. So as part of our task force, one of the things that was recommended for us to try to continue to do is for our students to be able to be provided with athletics. Co-curriculars will be something that we, you know, continue to look at once we get into our buildings and the school year begins. So right now, the NHIA has provided Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. We are currently in Phase Two of our return to play for athletics. We've gone through Phase One. We are gradually, conservatively moving through Phase Two of athletics with our summer programs, which mainly keeps our social distancing, our small groups, but allows for larger numbers to be at our activities, but spaced out in our outdoor facilities. We're still outdoors. We haven't moved indoors, and I don't anticipate that we would move indoors at this time or even into the fall season, because that's one of the the great parts about being the fall is that all of our activities are already outdoors, where we can really work on the social distancing and have that nice fresh air for our athletes and coaches and things like that. So September eighth would be the start date for fall athletics. For most of our teams, we would not start games or any type of competitive games until September eighteenth. The only ones that would be allowed to start before that would be our low-risk sports such as bass fishing and our golf teams. All other fall sports would start after games after September eighteenth. Practice would start on September eighth. We would follow the Phase Three guidelines that the NHIA provided. With that, we would also be creating our district ride guidelines and expectations that we would put into place, and that will go as broad as we needed and as fine detailed as we needed, from labeling porta potties at our fields to do we allow fans, things like that. Those will be things that we will be discussing in the next few, actually, the next few days to clearly lay out those expectations for our district and what is best for us as we move forward. As it's been mentioned before, bus transportation is twenty-four players and coaches combined. So obviously, that would be something that we will really need to work with. And then regionalization of our schedules. So we've been working closely. We are a Division Three school, one of only two that's above the notches. So Berlin and I have been working closely with our Division Four schools to look at regionalization of our schedules. So we would travel to places such as Littleton, Pittsburgh-Kanin, Berlin, Gorham, Linwood, Woodsville, to name a few, so that we wouldn't be traveling to all of those. But those would be the teams that we would be playing to try to keep it more localized and controlled in our area. And then, as I said earlier, we would be looking at setting up those guidelines that our teams, coaches, and fans would need to follow. So one of the biggest things that kind of came out of our task force was the importance of athletics from the socio-emotional piece for our students to really get back out there and have this opportunity. And one of the things that, you know, I've seen that's pretty clear is that if we if we don't provide them with an opportunity, they will look elsewhere, and then we are not able to control that. And they will look elsewhere all across the state. So our students and our athletes will be traveling all across the state, then coming back into our buildings. So if we can provide them with an athletic program that we have the control over where they're going and what they're doing and the coaches that they're working with, I feel as though that is much better than if we are not providing them with something and they are traveling across the state. One of the things is we're outdoors. We'll also be transporting our kids on buses. There will be mandatory for them to wear masks. Windows will be open. And it's a low number of students that will be on the buses with the coaches. So those are just some of the things that, an overview of where we are at. You know, and as we progress through, we will be, you know, creating those guidelines and expectations.
I have some questions about that. So it seems to me there's a disconnect between the idea that we're contemplating a pretty limited hybrid model for our schools. But yet, we are pursuing the NHIAA Phase Three guidelines, which envision travel, you know, on buses where they're not easily going to be supervised. We've had problems with that in the past and in normal times. It it really seems to me like there's this disconnect between what we're talking about doing in the schools, in the classrooms, and the athletic program. So I would I would propose that we tie our phases of the schools to the phases of the athletic program. So for example, we have our orange phase, our yellow phase, and our blue phase. It seems to me like an orange phase would be a Phase One of athletics. The yellow, which appears to be our opening strategy and could be for months, that that would be tied to a Phase Two of the athletic program. And only when we open fully would the athletic program be permitted to move into the Phase Three.
So I think one of the things that, you know, we really are considering for the like the schedule that we have for our academics has a lot to do with the fact that our students are in a building that might not have the best ventilation and of that nature. So that's why, from the perspective of fall sports and it being outdoors, you're limiting those risks to begin with.
But how many student athletes do we have compared to the general population in the high school? Wouldn't we be better served focusing our athletics time on making meaningful sports and outdoor activities for all of the population rather than a smaller number of student athletes? I'm looking at, you know, we have all these huge moving parts and all these problems that we have to deal with with opening schools, and it just seems like having to deal with how many kids can we fit on a bus to go to Woodsville to play a game seems like what should be a much lower priority in our reopening strategy.
But in my book, Herb, that is a priority, and those are the things that I have to.
Athletic director.
Correct. And those are the things that I have to be focused on and make sure that our coaches do. That's what I oversee. That's what I need to make sure that, and I understand your thoughts are academics. And that's, and I completely understand that. But my thoughts are, my thoughts are athletics and providing that opportunity for our kids. And one of the concerns is if we don't provide it, if we don't provide them being able to go back and play in games, we won't have those kids, and we won't get them back.
So and what in your, what does that mean exactly when you say that they would be going to other?
Oh, they'll travel. They'll travel. I've already received emails for our soccer kids to be able to sign up for Seacoast Soccer, which is down in the Portsmouth area. They'll go down to practice every every night down in the Kingswood area, and they'll be practicing with kids from all over the place, including Kennet, which is one that our bus transportation won't allow us to go to. So if we don't do something like that, these kids will be going to the Seacoast to play sports. They will be going to the Lakes Region to play sports. They will find every opportunity that they can find to play.
Don't we, as a school system, have the ability to say that that's not permitted? You know, if you travel outside of a certain area.
Because a parent can choose to take their kid and not have them play our sport, and they will go down and they will play. And we can't control that.
Yeah, Carrie, I'm gonna I'm gonna jump in real quick too, because I do want to emphasize the point that, you know, as Carrie, as the athletic director, you know, that is that is her focus, which allows, you know, all of the other administrators in the building to focus on the academic part. Carrie has been an incredible thought partner in every process and step that we've gone through with this, really since March. But now that she can focus back on that sports as her priority, I have I have no doubt that, you know, she will approach it with kid safety first and foremost in mind. And it is not something that will take away from us planning the academic aspects of the return in the fall.
And I think everything you said, Carrie, about the social emotional aspects and the the mental health of our student athletes are too numerous to mention. I think Herb's point is we're looking at board at approving a plan for all of our students. And if we could have a plan from athletics that coincided with our plan, not the state plan, for that, then to say we're gonna be Phase Three. I mean, I'm speaking for myself here. I don't want, none of us here want to be the deciding factor of getting one kid sick with COVID, period, end of story. But this is our task in front of us. This is the decision to move forward. That being said, we're restricting, or we're picking up. So now my next thing would be, okay, co-curriculars is theater or the art programs or music or this or that. Are they gonna have special attention where they can get all together every single day that's on a schedule that someone downstate writes? Hundred percent have have our teams, if we can scrimmage when we get in our model of the whole school as a building on our fields in our town. I know it's not what everybody's gonna want to hear or appreciate, but that's an equitable decision.
And and I don't want to minimize Carrie, what you're doing, and I understand the importance of athletics. I just, I feel like there's a disconnect between what's being proposed with athletics versus the stark reality of what we're talking about academically. I mean, we're talking about, I mean, I'm sure we'll get to this later, but, you know, basically band can't can't, you know, they can't play their instruments. You know, I think we really have to look at this as an important piece, but one that maybe we can't really focus on right now.
Okay, Herb, can I can I just can I just chime in? So one of my roles is I'm on the council for the NHIAA. So it's a it's a, I'm the coaching rep for the state. And just to really give you a quick summary, it is just, it is local control. So the NHIA certainly, you know, you've got ninety ninety high school varsity programs in the state. And they really, it's it's, and we're different pockets. So the school boards certainly are going to navigate what their school district does. You know, on the positive, if you're if you're if you're like advocating for just the athletics, and I I get it, guys. You know, athletics goes, but all the other co-curriculars, they don't go, the equity factor. You see colleges and universities closing down, like the Big Ten, the rumor is the Big Ten is gonna be closing down tomorrow. But when we get into the health piece and summarize that, in the North Country, in our region, we we are not gonna see less COVID than we do right now. And the NHIA is saying, hey, they're saying, hey, guys, you can go regional. So you can play, we can play Littleton eight times. We can, we can play Littleton, Groveton, and Gorham. So the kids travel twenty minutes. We can play them four times because the regular season doesn't count. The NHIA wants kids, the student athletes, to play. It really is. To me, it's intermural. The records don't count. It's the greatest year to be a varsity coach because you can't get fired because you don't, you can't, there's no wins or losses. And then and then they're gonna have an open tournament for the teams and the school boards that feel that feel comfortable sending their their high school students to the state tournament. SAU thirty-six may say, hey, we're not gonna go play Campbell. We're not gonna go play Menadnok. And and that's, I think that's an okay compromise from the coach's standpoint because as a coach, you know, advocating for the student athlete experience, and we all know all the different things besides kicking a soccer ball that kids get out of being part of a team. And we, and that's, if you think about it, education's really become, we've gone to that collaborative model in the classroom, what what kids have learned on athletic teams for years. So I just want you guys to, it's, the season doesn't count. If the school board recommends that we only can travel thirty minutes, that could be a very, that could be a great compromise. So I just wanted to give you some insight on, like, you know, you guys certainly can can model however you want this to look, and and we'll go from there. Does that sound like good, Carrie, kind of the summary?
I appreciate that. One one obvious thing that stands out for a lot of us, I think, is if we're having issues where we can't get our students two days on, two days a week to in-person academic learning and having issues with bus drivers and transportation, how are we gonna manage twenty-four players and coaches traveling anywhere, let alone afford it?
Right.
In addition to.
That's another big factor, you know, we're, I mean, I'm sure we'll talk about finances later, but gosh, there's a lot to talk about there, you know.
It's also, it's also a huge equity question. If, you know, it's really wonderful to hear that the athletic community has pulled together a plan that meets the needs of the athletic community. But that is not the majority of our students. And, you know, to to sort of hear the athletics piece presented with, we'll figure co-curriculars out later, that that creates an inequitable situation for kids who are equally stimulated by a team set environment with the co-curricular organizations and and activities, but have to be inside. And I think we really need to think very, very carefully about equity as this plan rolls out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions about athletics or co-curriculars? I got one slide left to go. Perfect. Next slide, Scott. So these are kind of just, in general, overall thoughts as we start putting some things together. You know, so we're talking about a plan where we're gonna have students in in-person instruction, you know, one or two blocks each week. We're talking about, you know, two days in A and B cohort. We're proposing that if a junior or senior drives themselves to school and they do not have a scheduled class, they be allowed to leave the building so that we can keep the number of students in the building down. Our flex day is gonna be used for, you know, virtual meetings, phone calls, check-ins with students, extra help. You know, the building will be cleaned Wednesdays so it will be closed to all students and staff. We've got that big lunchtime adjustment that we're gonna make once we have a plan and we can figure that out. You know, students are gonna complete assignments during their days out of school as assigned by their classroom teachers. And again, Patsy hit on that a little bit with this idea of flipped classroom and this kind of collegial model that we're looking at a little bit, knowing full well that A, our teachers didn't sign up to teach college, and B, our students aren't college students. So there's gonna be a learning curve here. Flex periods are gonna be used to organize the day and the week, communicate with their teachers, schedule some help sessions. We're still looking at doing some, hopefully being able to begin some portfolio work at the high school. And we're not gonna run a late bus after school for the foreseeable future of the high school. Any questions?
Good job, Jake.
Thanks, Dr. Anastasia. I do wanna, I do, I don't want to beat a dead horse. We kind of moved on from this athletics thing, but I do want to say, because there's a governing body for high school sports in New Hampshire, that's a reason that the focus has been on getting that up and running. If there was a governing body for co-curriculars, I'm sure there would be similar guidelines. We have not put our time into figuring out co-curricular activities yet. We have talked about it, what it could look like, how we could hold band outside, how we could hold chorus and a cappella in those classes and still do some theater stuff outside with stage readings. Those conversations have happened. But again, today's plan was about rolling out a large general idea that we can then work out the minute details afterward. So, you know, I just, I just wanted to put that out there again, you know. Carrie has done a great work, her and Mike Curtis, working with the NHIA. If there was a NHI Theater Department, you know, and. If there was a NHI theater department, you know, and I have a minor in theater, you know, I've directed, you know, I love co-curriculars, I love theater. But we're just not at that point yet. But it, but it's coming. The conversations have happened. We're just, we could get in the weeds about that and it's August 10th and we don't have a plan to bring what we're going to do. So we need to leave some things by the side before we move forward. So I'm hoping after tomorrow's listening session, we can vote and we can begin to move forward.
Exactly. And you know, as our norms and our DLT is to presume positive intentions. And I want us all to remember that all now, this is really hard work. And we're all trying to do what we can do for our kids and our families. Mike and Jake, real quickly, I think on communications, I don't think much has changed since you've last talked about it.
No, you know, our recommendations that I believe are contained in the, the plan that Marion has forward is for the district to adopt a standard operating procedure for communications. That's an internal process that helps to organize messages, delivery methodology, urgency as well. And that the communication subcommittee assists the district in the development and deployment of messaging around return to instruction when those decisions are made.
Thanks, Mike. Facilities are pretty, pretty big one. Rob and Bill.
Hey, good evening again, folks. So underneath the facilities and I know at the last in-person board meeting, you know, I, we threw some pretty big numbers at you. And I wanted to reiterate that those numbers weren't to improve the systems, those numbers weren't to do any renovations to them. Those are just potential costs associated with having to run our HVAC 24 hours a day, you know, for the, for the length of the school year. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure people understood, you know, that large electrical cost number. And then the potential impact it has on our heating in the winter months. And then the potential impact on cleaning, you know, the boilers and whatnot. So again, those weren't, hey, this is what it's going to cost, but those were potential expenses we needed to consider. So with the facility subgroup, we met several times and toured, you know, toured the buildings and came up with a list of recommendations for the, for the task force. And the first one was, and this was in response to the last community listening session, as well as emails that were sent to the SAU office. Our recommendation is not to reopen any of the previously closed schools. Some community members questioned the feasibility of that. And the fact is, the day we handed those schools over to the towns, they no longer became schools. So things in them that were grandfathered are no longer grandfathered if we take them back into school functioning. The other piece to it is you have to follow the Ed rule 321, which governs school construction. And in there, the school, you know, to open a building, the process you have to go through is quite a lengthy process. And it's quite expensive to get these older buildings back up to, you know, modern code because they're no longer grandfathered. So based off of that, we said it would be extremely difficult and cost prohibitive at this time to consider those options. The second recommendation we came up with is, you know, if we do choose to do some in-person learning, we need to consider alternative points of entry. Because to have, you know, however many people enter in the building through one entrance, the feasibility of scanning and screening all of those people in one entrance is going to be difficult. So, you know, Jake alluded to the high school that we may have it by grade levels. And in a minute, I'm going to share my screen with you and just give you a snapshot of what Lance Whitehead and his team at La Valley Brezinger has done to help us for planning in, in-class instruction. We do recommend the temporary hiring three temporary full-time custodians to aid in the cleaning and sanitation of the building. You've heard repeatedly the term deep clean on Wednesdays and Saturdays. You know, right now, to keep this building clean with the staff we have, we cannot do that on Saturdays without overtime. And, you know, then to really do some good deep cleaning every night. You know, the, the subcommittee really recommends the additional hire of one custodian, temporary custodian at each of the buildings. It is our recommendation that we install physical barriers and locations that social distancing may be difficult to enforce. Areas like administrative offices, the main offices, you know, our, our nursing center. You know, our nurse doesn't have an office that allows her to have six feet. It's only six feet wide. So by the time you get two people in there, it's difficult. So, you know, to evaluate those spaces and then install some type of plexiglass or, you know, clear shower curtain type divider. And lieu of purchasing desks, so we threw a number at you at the board meeting of about 160,000. We do not recommend that is a good use of district money to purchase desks. Instead, look to install physical barriers on tables if it is necessary. But based off of Lance Whitehead's plan, you know, we can get some kids in the building socially distanced at six feet. But in the event that, you know, we do need them a little bit closer than that six feet, we would want to install some type of barrier between students. The next one is to work with Siemens in relation to our HVAC control systems. So we, we've already done a lot of work with them around calculating each of our intake and exhaust systems for the various spots in the building. So calculating the CFM capabilities of the various rooftop units. So then you take that CFM rating of those rooftop units, calculate the square footage of the rooms affected by that one unit. And then you can calculate out how many times the air is exchanged in rooms. And I, you know, I could tell you this, based off of those calculations, we are in a little better shape than we originally anticipated. But there is still room to be improved. So we're also working with Siemens to identify, you know, additional air purifiers, portable ones to get the CFM value up in the classrooms to meet or exceed the five to six exchanges an hour. Bill, did you want to speak to that one anymore? See here? No. All right.
Bill, you're muted. Bill, we're not hearing you.
All right, we'll, we'll move on and if he can get talking, he can explain it. But my, my version was an overview, his version might be a little more in-depth. So the next recommendation is to adhere to the room capacities and occupancy flow patterns as advised by La Valley Brezinger. And I'm going to share my screen right now. All right, so here is a sample plan and this one takes a look at Lancaster. I'm going to zoom in just a little bit. So right here is what we call the traditional main entrance, the office is here. So you can see flow patterns as people come in. So they help us identify entrances and the direction of flow. So Lancaster is pretty fortunate in that they have, you know, hallways that allow for the six-foot social distancing. The only hallway gets really tight is right here. But as a, as a subcommittee and, you know, reviewing these plans with the building principals, we, we feel, you know, when people have their masks on, they'll be able to, you know, use this hallway effectively and safely. They also identify potential common pinch points, as indicated where my mouse is. So, you know, we may have to put up signage there to, to remind people to keep to the right or help direct them to that direction. I'm going to scroll down so you can see a classroom blow up. So here's an example of the art room. So what they've done is developed a seven-foot teacher zone. And then place the desk and based off of the, the drawings of each building, they can place the desk and to show the six-foot radius necessary and how many people. So in the art room in Lancaster, they have indicated if you set up the classroom in this manner, 13 students and a teacher could be in that space. Scrolling down to a different classroom, I'm going to, my mouse is right here. This classroom, same type of setup, seven-foot teaching zone. But if you notice down in this corner, there's one desk taken out because of the shared common door that we need to allow for people to go between classrooms in the event of emergency and still maintaining social distancing. Similar one for the high school, you can see the flow patterns. We have one hallway that we do need to do directional. It's only about four and a half feet wide. But where our building is set up like a big bunch of boxes, it would not be a hassle for someone to, to loop around if they needed to. Classroom here. I'm just trying to orient myself real quick. So this is the ag science room, the greenhouse is here. So that is an enormous classroom. So that gives us the capability, if we have a larger class like our humanities, that we can fit 21 people, our students in there and a teacher with a seven-foot teaching zone. And here are some, just some others, just so you can see it.
Rob, did that come back on?
You did.
Thank you. While, while we're at Lancaster, if I can interrupt for a second, at the White Mountains Regional, just looking at the turns of AR five to six that the CDC talks about. We're not bad shape, but there's some critical areas and I think most of the people that work in that building will, will say so. Music room could be one and there's a few others. But all of this, if we invest in maybe a air purifier, CDC, get our air changes up, could be utilized in the future. So pretty positive that we've got numbers now and that we've got something to work on.
All right, so our next recommendation is around playgrounds. So it's based out of the New Hampshire grades K through 12 back-to-school guidance document that was released, you know, about a month ago. And the recommendation is to keep our playgrounds open and to still have some type of recess. You know, these students are going to be asked to do things differently and they're going to have to be able to move. With that said, you know, our maintenance staff will have to pay close attention to common contact points, such as like the chains on swings, handles on equipment as kids are climbing up it. And, you know, we'll have to come up with protocols for each of the recess spaces because they are different in Lancaster and Whitefield in, in, in how we can ensure proper social distancing. Another recommendation for the school year is to discontinue the use of lockers, both in the hallways and in the locker rooms. That's pretty self-explanatory, those things are about an inch apart from each other and it just spells social distancing disaster. The next one is to stop the use of the mouth bubblers. So most of our water bubblers around the district have been converted to water. The, the fill stations that you can put your refillable bottle under. We are recommending that they take the T-valve out and just put in a 90 so that no water is going to the actual mouth function. And you can only use the bottle fill function. With that said, Lancaster does need three of these units. And, and we have the staff that are qualified and, and, you know, can install them. So the next one is, is the, the shared bathroom, so the, the bigger bathrooms in the hallway. So it is, it is going to be a task. When one teacher sends a kid to the bathroom, you don't know how many other teachers may have allowed a kid out of the room to use the bathroom. In those situations, you know, it is our recommendation that each school kind of develop a plan and how to monitor that. Because we don't want eight to 10 kids in these bathrooms at a time. You know, and with that said, you know, we need to evaluate whether toilets or sinks need to be temporarily disabled so that you can have that six-foot social distancing. And then finally, some of our sink handles and Jeremy noise, if you're on, you can probably identify them. Some of our sink handles are those push ones. The second you let off them, the water stops. So we just need to evaluate some of our faucets and make sure that they provide adequate water for the 20-second minimum hand washing procedure that's recommended by the CDC.
Much appreciated, Rob.
Hey, no problem. And then finally, our last recommendation is not to have students eat lunch in the cafeterias. We do recommend that you look at an alternative as a grab and go or delivery to the classrooms. And most of our buildings, we have identified our cafeterias as potential teaching spaces if we have larger groups of kids that we need to spread out.
Rob and Bill, can you just go back to the HVAC and the possible need for air purifiers? Because I know we've talked about Whitefield, we've got some updated information, Bill.
Yes.
It's going to be more of a need there than some of the other buildings, is that still correct?
Yes, it is, Mike. Rob, do you have the display for Whitefield to put up, do you? I mean, for the elementary?
I'm not going to put it up because we didn't get their milling. So they took in effect the built-in bookcases and cabinets and stuff.
That's fine.
And the Whitefield plan they originally had, those weren't indicated. So the numbers aren't accurate in the classrooms and I don't want to, you know, give any deceiving information out tonight. So the ones I showed tonight were just a quick demonstration on what La Valley Brezinger is providing us for guidance.
Okay, just talked to that a little bit, you're right, Mike. Actually doing some work and comparing some notes to what Lance put together. The, there's a couple of areas that seem to be getting in that area. The biggest concern there is the actual ground floor classrooms and the first floor classrooms, which are marginal. They're very definitely marginal. But yet I did some research today and have contacted the state to see if we put a, a filtration system in with a HEPA filter, can we in fact assume that it's doing the job without exhausting? Because they don't, they don't have any outlets. And I'm waiting for a feedback from Amy Clark, who is on the Department of Education, does facilities on that sort of things. If that can happen, it looks like we could do some, some improvements in some areas to help out those return numbers, yes.
So, so right now, we'd have to look at adding some filtration units to each one of those classrooms in order to even get the eight kids in there. Is that, that's correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Yeah, and Mike, I can speak to that a little bit. To, to purchase a unit that would provide the CFMs necessary for an 800-square-foot classroom, which is double pretty much of what you need, they're about $700 to $800 a unit. And then they have smaller units for smaller spaces, so they have ones with 400. So then you, you know, even if you had a 500-square-foot classroom, you can use the CFM measurement that's feeding that classroom and the existing HVAC and include your portable unit and then calculate whether that takes care of the needs for that individual classroom.
And I think, Bill, that's where we left off this morning in our discussions.
Yeah, I just, I did some calculations based on square footage or actually cubic, it's actually not square footage, but you got to calculate into cubic feet to be able to figure out the whole exchange for the whole room. But yet, yeah, with the one about, say, 500 CFM, we'll completely turn around a couple of rooms without a problem.
Robin, what is the cost for a 500 CFM?
They're running about 400 bucks.
Yeah, the, the, the big ones are up in around 800 or probably like Rob said, 700 and a small one's probably four to $500.
So when can we get an idea of how many of these filtration system units that we might need in all three buildings?
Well, actually, I'm doing the work on it now, hopefully in a couple of days I'll have calculations per room. But really, Jessica, we do have some filtration in these rooms. There is some air moving. To be able to get a good calculation, you almost have to do an air balance study, which you've had done before in Whitefield when it was commissioned. There's companies out there will come in and look at the current airflow in the room, look at the exchange and, and recommend for this. look at the exchange, and recommend for this room to get meet your levels, you need Y. But it's a study. It needs to be calculated because if we buy one just to do the room, we could buy one, say, an eight hundred, and we only need a four hundred.
Right.
I mean, depends on what we wanna do and how quickly. So, yes.
We were talking about adding, we know that in Lancaster, there are several classrooms that absolutely need them. And now we're adding in Whitefield Elementary. As far as being borderline, maybe some classes do, but on the ground level there, I mean, we have to have some idea of if they're passing the quality tests now or or they're way off, that we're gonna need something.
We do have something. We do have the calculations for all the schools. Airflow, CFM, out of the, out of all the units and everything. You brought up Lancaster for a second. The only two places that we have a minimum below four is the stage in the gym. All the rest of the classrooms are very well, sevens, eights. I mean, they're very well at Lancaster because of the design of the system. You're, you're pretty good there. Where we fall down, obviously, is at the, at the classrooms on the ground floor and the first floor of Whitefield. And then at the high school, we've got a couple of areas that need a little help. But yet, there's some good areas there too. So we need to, we need to really look into where our deficiencies are, and then what do we take to solve them? Yes.
So how many classrooms on the ground level are roughly, what is there, probably, I don't know?
Mike, you could talk to, how many?
I think, I think I did the count on that, and I think just classrooms alone, I believe we need twenty-one of those units. That does not count any of the smaller office spaces on the both floors as well.
Gives me an idea.
And Cheryl, when you say smaller office spaces, you're speaking of things like the individual teaching spaces, like the reading help and things like that?
Yeah, special ed, Title I, yeah.
So that's about eighty-five hundred dollars for those twenty-one classrooms, if they're four hundred, the four hundreds.
Keeping in mind that those classrooms in general tend to be three hundred square feet. And so a four hundred unit would be appropriate for that. And then, as Bill said, considering that we are moving air in there, it's just subpar. We seem to be the exact opposite of Lancaster, where we're moving air, they are not. Where they're moving air, we're the opposite. So we're gonna need units in just about every one of our classrooms and those individual intervention spaces.
Can we use funds from the building and grounds? I said, can we use the funds from the building and ground?
I think that's a discussion later when we have all of our, all of our costs on a piece of paper.
We better get at it because everything is so backordered. It might be months before you get them.
Actually, Rob, you, you did some research on that, right?
Yeah, yeah. So there's a company called BlueAir.com. They, they use pretty unique devices, and they were readily available last Friday.
I would have to look at the actual language from when the Capital Reserve Fund or Expendable Trust Fund was formed to be able to answer the question. So I have a note.
I, I would think this is a safety concern, so.
Well, and, and, and I'll argue as well that, you know, if we're not gonna make a a capital expense on upgrading the HVAC system, the main system at Whitefield, we could use that improvement in air quality even outside of a COVID situation. We all know that the struggles we've had the last three winters with colds and flus. This might explain a bit about what we've had going on, so.
So actually, you know, if this plan is approved this week or whenever, we can put that in right away and still use the CARES Act money. If, if this is a time, time-bound issue, we can get that in right off. So it shouldn't be an issue. So health, Chuck and Mike, and we also have Dr. Ford and John Ross here for some input.
Sure.
Okay. So I just wanna start off saying, you know, we had a great group of people helping us out with this. A lot of people from the health professionals and some parents giving us some really good insights and you know, recommendations that we use to put these forth. A lot of, you know, our recommendations, we've already been touched on today, you know. We're recommending students are socially distanced, six feet apart. Wherever possible, they stay in cohorts. And, you know, that they are wearing masks when they're in the school building. Some of the other things. We definitely wanna stress to parents that we want them to be screening their kids for COVID symptoms at home. And if they are showing symptoms, not sending them to school. Even if they are sent to school, they have the COVID symptoms or they develop them, you know, on the way to school, we will have a secondary screening done at the school each day by our nurses. On Mondays, that's gonna consist of, you know, asking some questions. You know, just getting a feel for where they're at around their health. And then the rest of the days of the week, it's gonna be a quick temperature scan. If any student or staff member is showing signs of COVID, we're treating it as it's COVID until we know different. So they will be sent home for ten days or until a negative test comes up. And if there is a staffer, student who has been in contact with somebody, so like if you're a student and your sister is COVID possible, COVID positive, you also going to have to quarantine at home for fourteen days. If we do get positive cases confirmed in the school, we're deferring to the Department of Health and Human Services for direction. You know, they're the ones that are gonna tell us, well, they're gonna do like the contact tracing and, and that work, which is why, you know, the assigned seats on the buses in the classrooms are very important so we can help them with those steps. And then they will make recommendations on, okay, these people need to quarantine, but you guys can stay open. Or if something comes bad enough, they might recommend, you know, further steps from there. We do have some recommendations around our nurses' offices. Each school is gonna need a clean room where the nurses can do, you know, their, their normal work that they would do outside of a pandemic, as well as a COVID room where kids who are showing symptoms can go. And those rooms have to be separated so that there's no chance of contamination there. We are recommending each school may need additional support for the nurses to continue their day-to-day operations and being able to make sure that there isn't any contamination for like a student who needs to come down to get their medications that they need every day. That, you know, a nurse can take care of that and not have to also be taking care of a potential COVID situation as well. We are recommending or trying to look into some thermal temperature check software. Some of the stuff they have online these days looks really, really nifty and, you know, trying to see if that's something that could work for us that would make those temperature screenings coming into the building a lot, a lot smoother and a lot quicker. Some other basic recommendations. You know, we, we did talk about sports and things like music and physical education.
Can Chuck, can I?
Absolutely.
Can I chime in? So in regards to, so just to piggyback on nurses for the school board. And again, if we, if we need to send something in writing, we certainly will. Because the added support, the added software, the added room, the added resources is gonna, is gonna extend the purse of the school district. I also want for Dr. Ford and Chief Ross, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of give it to you at the end after we do our summary. So as Chuck alluded to, music and phys ed's gonna look, look very different. I think kind of a cool recommendation are mask lanyards. So, you know, kids wearing lanyards, that, that's gonna help. There was recognition of like a mask placemat or little baskets for the little guys, things like that. But I think the lanyards make sense, and that, that's something maybe we can do as a district. In regards to recess, once, again, we haven't like looked into the details of like, you know, I'm, I'm just calling it child activity. So that, you know, when kids are active, how do we, how do we keep them safe and secure and so forth? But we do have like the American Academy of Pediatrics where we can look into that. Use, you know, Chief Ross, Dr. Ford as our, as our experts, the CDC, New Hampshire U Sports. Like the, the governor's office has, has put together some really good guidelines in regards to activity in sports for, for the younger kids. And at the high school level, we actually do have a New Hampshire Sports Medicine Committee who have given guidelines for, you know, the high school age students in regards to any type of physical activity. So we do have resources. We haven't liked peeled the onion back because until we, until you kind of let us know how and how you want us to go forward. But we, you know, I just wanted to reiterate that to Chuck. Chuck, I'm gonna just like make one more point and turn it back to you, and then you can give it to Dr. Ford and the chief. So hey, in, in regards to like our lens, and it's been hard for Chuck and I because we are in, we're not health experts, but we're facilitating the health committee. And we're really kind of like curriculum and programming guys. But when, when, when I, when we talk to like the health professionals and parents and so forth, it's, we're really talking whole child in our world. So like the, you know, I talked to the nurses, they believe like in seeing the students on a weekly basis is positive. Because you can get that, that weekly health check, you can get that weekly social emotional check. So just, you know, if we can do the hybrid model for the whole child, that makes sense in our domain. So we just kind of want, you know, that social emotional wellbeing is great for our kids. So I just, you know, wanted to put that officially out there. Now, if we wore, Chuck and I wore our instruction teacher kind of hats, in regards to like just analyzing how you educate kids and classroom management, that, that's a different ballgame. So we understand the barriers when, just with classroom management with, with children wearing masks. So just to put it all in a life of a SAU student, there's gonna be a primary screen at home. We're gonna secondary screen them outside the building when, before they get to school. The nurses are creating like a screening questionnaire, and we are looking to create an app with Jeremy. So the majority of our SAU community is gonna be able to use their phone, their app to do that questionnaire. We're gonna, we're gonna screen kids, staff, and visitors. You know, we've mandated school mask, which is, which is great. That's local control because some, some school districts have a different language, but we're gonna mandate mask. Our kids are gonna stay six feet apart. And then, like Jake said, at the high school, at least, and you mentioned that, Chris, with the cohorts. Our committee really, cohorts is the, is the, in the health committee, you can contact trace, you can keep them safe, you, you know what I mean? It's just, it, 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 it makes perfect sense. And at the high school level, at least having that A and B cohort, I think is, is a good step forward. And Chuck, do you, did I miss anything?
I had a question.
Yeah, so if you, so Jess, you answered. So what I'm gonna do now is if you guys have questions, I'm gonna let, we, we may be able to answer them, but I'm gonna, Dr. Ford, please check. Yes.
It involves both health and the athletic piece.
Yep.
For, and it's kind of a clarifying question, if anything. So I'll try and be precise. But if a student, if the board adopts to go and use the Phase Three NHIAA recommendations for our student athletes, what kind of health precautions are included in that Phase Three for our students getting on the bus and going to a game? And, and temperature checks where through NHIAA? I mean, it sounds like if they're out on the field, there's no mask requirements, there's this, that, you know, on the Phase Three thing.
Jess, that, that, that's a, yeah, that's a great question. And, and we can make it as, as detailed, and I, I don't, you know, I don't wanna use the word strict, but good, you know?
Right.
So here, here's, here's where some recommendations for that. Or it's man, it's, I, I think it's gonna be, it either is mandated, they're talking about it, because again, this is very fluid. So if Littleton gets on, their kids get on a bus to come to White Mounds for a soccer game, they, those kids are gonna take a temperature check before they get on the bus. So and they're, they're gonna have a sheet with like their initials, that everyone was screened. When they come to our build, our building, they're gonna give it to Carrie. We're gonna do the same thing. We're gonna have a visitors' outdoor potty facility and the home team. In regards to fans, we really think that it's, it's almost impossible to, to eliminate fans. It's just gonna, especially if you look at Whitefield and Colonel Town Little League this summer, kind of where we're at. And I'm not, but it's just gonna be, I mean, there, there's really, our guidelines and the way we run athletics in the high school and middle school are gonna be so much safer and and the protocols in place compared to where, where we're at outside of school. I think you're on the right track. So I'll let Carrie or Chief or Dr. Ford, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, I'll just jump in right there for a second from the athletic perspective, Jess. That is one of the recommendations that they're making that, even though our kids were screened prior to coming into school, we rescreen them before they get on a bus to travel to a game. And as Mike said, in regards to like the fan's perspective, we can be as creative as we can possibly can. I mean, things that are popping into my mind is we continue that theme that we did for graduation, and we have pods for families that are distance out on our play, in our, like our spectator area so that we can, we can separate out our fans. But they are still able to come and possibly attend and watch the games. And, and as Mike said, you know, home porta-potties, away porta-potties for fans and guests, home for traveling, like an away porta-potty for teams, home one for our players. They've taken away like the mouthguard rule for athletes for soccer. So that's one last thing that a kid needs to be, you know, in and out of their mouth. So there are, there are a lot of different things, Jess, and a lot of the things that we have been doing through the summer will transition into what we would do with the fall. And a lot of the stuff that you might see will be, you know, will be the expansion of games, but all the health protocols that we have been put into place this summer will continue through the fall in what we do with athletics.
I guess one of the things that I just wanna put out there, we heard earlier tonight that Littleton School District are going basically a hundred percent in-person traditional model for returning to school. And if we're talking about putting our, our remote learners or whether they're in person or online or a hybrid scenario, putting them in exposure to obviously students that are gonna be fully exposed, and then the contact tracing when the athletes are all together at the end is probably, no one could answer that question, what that would even look like and how you could control it. Or be creative enough that, you know what, they're playing them, but they're not playing them, or, or having that interaction with another district that is, feels that they can accommodate somehow going full in-person in a, you know, few short weeks. But those, those are just the kind of.
Yeah, so.
They have been huge, you know, in southern, in Massachusetts and whatnot, those kids have been playing football, hundreds of kids on the fields, every day training over the summer and everything like that. And they're, and, but their numbers are going up. We're in a surge regardless. We're lucky and fortunate enough to live in a very rural area where, where. We're lucky and fortunate enough to live in a very rural area where, where we locked down quickly swiftly and we flattened the curve to begin with, but the curve is trending up regardless whether we're rural or not. Um, there were great strides and I think, um, Marion may have sent them to you, Carrie, um, apps where kids can fill out an app and answer the questions and a temperature check at home before they're going to training and sports and on the fields and interactive play as well. Where they basically get like a green ticket, like I'm good to go. But then what happens in our athletics, if we go along with phase three of N H I A A and you have four kids that test positive for COVID and then you're done. You know, you have to obviously go back to, then, then you're talking about, we gotta worry about what percentage of our student athletes at that point is too many? You know, so I, I've just thrown all that out there. It's, I know everybody's frustrated and it's a lot to wrap our.
I mean, I mean Jess, I'm human as well. So I mean, obviously I'm, I'm thinking about all of those things. Um, you know, and it's not just, you know, the, 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 the positives, it's also what are the concerns? What are the things that we gotta make sure we check off to provide that safe environment for their, for our kids to the best of our ability?
So are we calling the shots of those like preventative measures locally or is that a phase three part of N H I A A?
So they, they provide their guidelines Jess, but then we can expand off from those with that local control and add to it and, and expand. I mean, we can, we can add to them, so.
Jess, are, are, we're, we're, we're really like combining, we're combining their recommendations and we're making ours more, um, safe and detailed. Our, our, what we're, what we're talking about and kinda rolled out to you just now is, is more detailed. Uh, the safety of the fans, kids, everybody, it, I think it's, I think it's more thoughtful than what you're gonna see in others, other, other bigger school districts.
Right.
Um, do you guys, does this board have any, uh, you guys have any questions? We have our, our, our health experts on the video call in regards to, yeah, so please, um, with, with Chief and Dr. Ford, we'd love you to ask, pick their brains.
Okay, so, um, I think the question that's on my mind and has been brought up a lot to me in conversation has been, let's talk through the scenario of it's 10 o'clock in the morning, Little Johnny's sitting in science class and he's got a fever. So walk us through what's gonna happen regarding Little Johnny, the student who's showing a symptom, as well as the students who are sitting in front of him, next to him, possibly the teacher. Walk us through exactly what that's gonna look like.
So the, the student who has the fever will have a mask, obviously. Will be brought to the nurse's office, the nurse will have him in an isolation room and contact his guardian, who will then be advised to contact a doctor to arrange for a COVID test. Uh, and that child cannot return to school. There's a few criteria, but if he has a negative test and he's no longer febrile for 24 hours, he can return. There's obviously a lag time on the testing. In our area, we can get a pot, we can get a test in about three to five days.
Um, can I, can I just stop, stop you there for a second? So it's three to five days right now where we have not a whole lot of testing going on and not a lot of cases. So as, as we get into schools being open, do you anticipate that that's gonna go, you know, flu season starts to hit, you know, all, all the transmission of colds and, and, you know, all of that. Do you expect that that time is gonna go up significantly?
No, because that's in the face of our recent national, the labs are national, the lab corps and quest labs. So those are delayed numbers because of the surge that happened in Florida and Texas, Mississippi. So those are actually delayed. And if you went through the National Guard, their delay was 10 days in the recent past. It has been upgraded. Right now it's about seven. So, uh, it is improving.
Okay.
Um, but if there becomes a national surge, that number will go up.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's not necessarily the community rate, it's what's happening in the whole nation.
Okay.
The national labs.
So we could, we could be potentially looking at a case where, uh, the turnaround time for the COVID testing would be so long that contact tracing wouldn't really be feasible? Or the, the 10 or 14 day quarantine would be the same as waiting for a test?
Yes, that is definitely a problem. The longer the result takes, the less helpful it is for quarantine and protecting others.
Right, okay. How do we, how do we deal with the scenario where the child with symptoms goes home? And the parents say, uh, it's just, you know, it's just a little cold. I, I'm not gonna go get him tested because I don't have insurance, I don't have time to take him, whatever, you know? How do, how do we proceed then? Because it's presumed COVID positive, right?
Right. So if they don't get the COVID test, and we don't know, but they had symptoms that made us think there's the COVID possibility, then they're out for 10 days minimum. And at the end of that 10 days, their symptoms have to be improved and they have to have no fever for 24 hours.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Which is different than just exposure risk, which is 14 days and it doesn't matter if you're tested or not.
Mm-hmm.
So if, if that person that you just alluded to tested positive, those people that were considered at risk near that child are out of school for 14 days and it doesn't help to get tested.
Okay, so in the, in the case of a child who's sent home for 10 days, we don't know if they have COVID or not, um, does that affect the children who are in their cohort, you know, who were possibly exposed if we presume that they're COVID positive?
Not initially. Not unless we start seeing more children with symptoms. And then the logical solution is to get them tested as soon as poss- possible.
If the, if the care, you know, if the guardians cooperate.
Right.
Right, so I, that was, what was gonna be one of my questions was that I read that, um, unless, uh, one of your primary care doctors, um, basically ordered the test, that insurance wouldn't pay it. If you went to the, um, clinic, say in Littleton, I forget the name of it, but it's a hundred and fifty dollars for a COVID test. Um, you're gonna find that a lot of parents aren't gonna test because they can't afford to test or don't have the insurance that will cover a test. Um.
In our community, I've not heard, in our community, I've not heard of anybody not getting it covered. It's very easy to accomplish through the weak system. The National Guard, similarly, it was easy, although the National Guard just pulled out and now we're providing those services. We currently have a drive-in COVID testing area, uh, across the street from the hospital. And all you need to do is call us first and if you're in our system, we can easily get it covered. There's no problem at all. It's even a nurse approval.
Families to weeks essentially.
So the, I think, you know, both Herb and Jess's questions are really raising for me the issue of the need for a very, very strong communication campaign with our students. First of all, Jess, the New Hampshire Medicaid program has extended coverage specifically for COVID testing for uninsured individuals. So if they do not have insurance, they are, they can be covered through New Hampshire Medicaid for that test only. And secondly, if they do have insurance, the governor's executive orders have required that their insurance cover the test. So Dr. Ford's spot on, there's nobody who's not getting a test paid for. Um, but, but clearly if that's a concern that has come to you, it, it means that the message isn't out there broadly enough within our community that there is a payment stream for those tests and, and that cost should not be a barrier to doing what's right to protect the community. But the second piece is really talking clearly with our community members about the, the COVID bundle is kind of how I've come to know it of masking, physical distancing, hand hygiene, staying home if you're ill. Those are all universal precautions. We do not know who is positive and who is negative, so we apply universal precautions, assuming everybody's potentially a carrier. The symptom checking matters because those are the people who are acutely ill enough to spring a symptom on us, but we just assume everybody potentially positive. Unlike past universal precautions though, they aren't about protecting the wearer from the community at large. They're about protecting the community at large from the wearer. And that is the piece that I think the community at large still doesn't get, or we'd see lots more people wearing masks, lots more people adhering to social distancing. I mean, those are not, they're not hard interventions to achieve, but it's not happening consistently. And the other piece is this.
Walking into a doctor's office and if you have a cough or a fever, please put on a mask. It's not for you, it's for everybody else.
Oh, it's for everybody else around you. Right, but it matters even more now. And I think we have a duty to really make sure that those points are clearly communicated in ways that resonate with the community and that they are reiterated over and over again. And especially, especially that parents and guardians truly know how to help their children learn how to adhere to these guidelines before they present at school. Because, you know, for our educators in the classroom, day one of being in the classroom should not be the moment when a kid first starts practicing wearing a mask. And it shouldn't be the first moment when a kid starts paying attention to how far away they are from their classmates. It should be something they're already practicing at home right now. But if we as a district don't communicate that, set that expectation with our families and give them the tools they need to start practicing that, then, you know, the first few weeks back at school is gonna be all about teaching kids how to not lick each other.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up with Dr. Ford in regards to recess? Like, just so you can, um, we, we did talk about recess and out, outside activities. Um, and, and his perspective would certainly add to the dialogue tonight. So in regards to recess and athletics, Dr. Ford?
Yeah, but first off, leading into that, um, the question is how, how safe are we, right? We wouldn't even be thinking about opening if we didn't think it was safe. And to give you a perspective, our, our community rate is like less than half a percent. The state's rate is 1.9%. The concerning rate is over 5%. So according to the CDC, the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services and the American Academy of Pediatrics, we are safe to open. There's no question there. Then the question becomes how safe do we need, how, how, um, what risks are we mitigating? So, you know, if we wear masks, social distance, that's fantastic. How much do we stretch that? Um, with that said, outdoor activities are considered very reasonably safe, particularly if you're maintaining social distancing. So particularly if you're not yelling or blowing an instrument or whatever, so. Um, and if you're having less than 15 minutes within that six feet, that's six feet. That's a very critical kind of thing. So if kids are playing outside despite the fact that they're yelling, they, you know, if we're encouraging them to stay six feet away, they might break that for seconds or even a minute or two. But if you're not getting that critical 15 minutes, it's not considered a big risk. Um, so it is reasonably safe, given our community rate, um, to do so. Does that help, Mike?
Yes, thank you.
Can, can we talk a little, that kinda touches on one of my questions. Um, in looking at the, the plan and our color chart for the different phases, there's, um, a, a note at the bottom saying that we would move to more restrictive color when the school's positive, uh, COVID population is greater than the community's, uh, positive COVID population. Can you explain that a little bit more? Because it's been raised that, you know, maybe, maybe we should be looking more at the community rate. And also, um, does that imply that if the positive population is higher at let's say Lancaster school, would it mean the district shuts down or just Lancaster? So.
Right, so I think just to add on Herb, what you're asking is Dr. Ford had mentioned that our community right now is at about a half a percent, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
So Whitefield is one.
If your school goes over a half a percent, it'll be shut down.
Right, right. And what's the rationale, and what's the rationale just for, you know, just so we understand it? For using the school's population versus the community's, uh.
For closing.
Right, yeah.
Sure, so it, it comes from epidemiologists and as you know, right now, there's not everyone agreeing with everything and scientific proven. But there's consensus and the consensus among epidemiologists is to generally use that, that rule of thumb, that if whatever you're looking at, a school, a business, if their rate exceeds the community rate, then it means there's a surge, there's a little epidemic going on in that facility.
Right.
So that's the logic for that.
Okay.
Um, and then the 5% has just come from the epidemiologist, the CDC, who say that if your positivity rate exceeds 5%, then that's way too high and they need to be doing something.
Right, okay. So would, to come back to like the second part of that, so let's say, uh, you know, one of our schools has a, a, a percentage that is concerning. You know, do we shut down as a district or do we shut down the one, one school?
My recommendation would be the one school. I don't think you need to shut down the district, just that school that's involved.
Okay, knowing that we have siblings and sports teams and, you know, uh, you know, there, there's possibility for spread beyond just the school population, right?
Right, so we're assuming we're practicing social distancing, wearing masks and have people who are following that kinda thing.
Right.
So that sibling, if they, once that sibling tested positive, their other siblings are gonna be told not to go to school.
Right, right, okay.
And just for our, us non-health professionals too, Dr. Ford, is there a certain percentage rate of false negatives, false positives on COVID testing?
Unfortunately, it's getting better. There's two new tests that we will be incorporating very soon through the weak system. Um, that has incredibly good numbers. Camera, I just read them today. The specificity is something like a hundred percent, which, which means your false negative rate's gonna be very low here. And, uh, but the tests that are being used right now are a little crappy. There's like a 20% false positive rate. Uh, and it depends which one. The fast one is even worse than the, the, the other one, so. Our, our current tests do, are pretty bad, but there's two new ones out that look fantastic.
Thank you.
I have a word about the, what's gonna happen. Chris Van Berg had mentioned, uh, what we'd be thinking to do with students and teachers who became positive. And we talked about it a little bit and I, I might've just made assumptions. If a kid tests positive until they, until they can return to school, I was assuming they would go to, to remote learning since we have a hybrid model and we have that ability. And if the teachers were out, that's really up to the administration, but again, we have a hybrid model, so maybe they could go to remote teaching or unfortunately need a substitute teacher.
I think in general, those assumptions are, are correct, Dr. Ford. Uh, we would be looking at, at trying to create continuity for the student, uh, through a, an online option, staying connected to the curriculum and, uh, depending upon the situation of the teacher as well, try to connect, uh, create that continuity, um, from their home if possible. And if not, we'd be looking at, uh, substitute. Um, and then Scott and I have had some conversation that if we came to worst case scenarios, uh, looking at, uh, coverage across buildings, uh, from teachers as well, so.
Well, while we're on the subject, I don't, it may come up later, but while we're talking about substitutes, what, what is the plan? Because obviously our pool of substitutes, a lot of them are retired teachers who understandably may not want to be in, in the school buildings. Um, you know, what, what, what is the plan? I didn't see anything about that.
So do we wanna wait on that a little bit, Marion and?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, let's come back to that.
I'm, I'm just looking at the time. This, um, broadcast is gonna stop around 10:15, right, Jeremy? We, I know that we said it late and we're like, oh, well, we'll do it. Um, but I wanna get through these main points. And a lot of these things, we simply don't have the answers. It really does depend which teachers are coming back, what students are coming remote or not. And I mean, so all of our plans are contingent upon those.
Right. Um, okay, so as far as health goes, an, an important question I have is what, um, what is the criteria we would use to move, again, in our color phases chart from the yellow to a blue of fully open? What, what, what is our, what is our criteria for moving that way?
I believe it's probably when we have the vaccine and, and, and DHHS is saying schools can open. That wouldn't be a local, we would not make that decision locally. We would get guidance.
Right, but let's go say if we have, are we looking at that if one of our buildings or the entire district goes to a percentage of positive cases that is more than our community as a whole, being that half a percent, say right now, today, we don't know what it will be when time comes to open school buildings. Um, it may be closer to one or two percent, but surely under the 5%, when are we moving to a, oh, we just gotta go a hundred percent back remote and that's it, you know? So what is? So what is, is it based on what you just said or?
Yes, and with guidance, we, we would get guidance, absolutely.
But it's gotta be a number or a percentage if, if, like you just said. You, you would close Lancaster school if say one percent of students are infected and staff in that, in that cohort, in that building. Because it exceeds what the community is at, at that time. You know what I'm saying? So if, if all of our buildings are showing one percent COVID cases. We're a hundred percent closing the district and going a hundred percent remote. But where is that line? And that's, I guess, probably what Herb's saying.
Yeah, I mean, on, on, on either side of it, of course. I mean, I, we just, we just heard that Littleton is.
A vaccine, we're a hundred percent in person, back to normal, hopefully, and all hugs and everything included.
Right. But, but then at the same time, we just heard that, that Littleton is going, going back full.
Traditional.
Yeah, so like why, why would they do that? But we're saying we need. Oh, yeah, right.
That's their decision, that's their board. I mean, I just, I want all these questions that everybody has to be put out there. Because we're gonna have to decide and make that decision as a board fairly soon.
So, but are, but are we saying, uh, you know, that as a board, that that's, that's our policy, that we're gonna wait until?
I mean, you can make those, you know, if there's amendments and, and things and recommendations that we're not comfortable with. Come tomorrow after we hear the public input and everything.
Yeah.
You know, the plan may be yes, but this is amended and that's amended.
We're not, you know, we're not physicians, we're not public health officials. And I just saw John Ross's chat came up, he had a, um, maybe John, you can just say what, what you just popped up on the chat. But I think that we have to depend on our experts and we will, we will be in contact with them all the way with this.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. I just, I, I wanna know what it, you know, what the procedure is, you know? So, so for now, it sounds like we would be in the yellow phase.
For a very long time. So, um, let's, um, next is in.
Sorry, I have, sorry, I have another one. Actually, I mean, there's a lot of questions about health, so I.
Yes.
I don't know, does anyone else have anything? Cause I feel like I'm piling on, but. Okay, so one of the.
Sorry.
Okay.
You repeat that.
Yeah, I just said, I, I don't know if any other board members wanna, wanna ask questions. I feel like I'm piling on, but if no one else has anything, then I'll.
I'm sure they'll speak up if they have.
I'm waiting for the end.
Okay.
I know, um, Kristen also, I think you have to go at nine thirty. Is that correct? Do you have another meeting?
Yes, it's correct.
Okay, so really quick, there was one thing in the plan that seemed like an inconsistency and that was that, um, we had. We were talking first about if, uh, staff or students had traveled outside of New England, that they would be required to quarantine. But then there was a new guideline saying that a quarantine wasn't required if they drove in their own car, wore masks, et cetera, et cetera. So it seems like an inconsistency there because we don't really know. You know, I mean, it's, it's a simple question to say, have you traveled outside of these number of states, you know?
Well, that, they, um, that one for in the car is for staff members of school districts. That just came out and it came out, um, guidance from the governor. That's so that teachers and staff members can bring their children to college. And then after that, it's not gonna go into effect anymore, that's gonna come off.
Ah, so that is a.
It's inconsistent, I, I, it's the kind of guidance we've been getting and it's.
Okay. I get it, yeah.
Gonna come in all the time and we're gonna have to deal with it.
Right, okay. And then the last thing is just for masks, okay? If we're really gonna require the students to wear masks and we're telling parents to send the kids with masks. But I think the reality is the school district is going to have to have a lot of masks on hand. So have, have we, what's our provision for that?
So, well, I'm working right now with the nurses and with Mike and Jake. Um, we actually got today, um, twelve hundred masks from the DOE. Um, they, they get, they had so many and they divided it per, uh, free and reduced rate.
Okay.
But they're adult masks and they have instructions on how to make them kid masks, which is totally ridiculous. So what we will do is, um, the, the nurses will guide us in how many we should buy and. You know, I know that kids are gonna want some from home, parents are gonna want some from home, we're just gonna have to figure that out.
Okay.
So along the way, are we figuring out how to actually have masks that are effective? I mean, there, there's a part of me that says, I know that there's expense here, but if we just decided. We're buying a mask for every kid in the district that we know is the right shape with the right material. And let's just put lancers and pirates and Spartans on them and, and make it a school pride kind of movement. Because I see an awful lot of masks out there, when I see masks that, um, are gappy. Or not worn appropriately or too small, so people's noses aren't covered. Um, and you know, do we have kind of an Occam's razor that could be exercised here? Where we just say, look, we're all in this together, this is Sparta, we're gonna order twelve hundred masks that are the right kind of masks for our kids.
We will, I, I know the nurses are very, um, conservative and they would, they will do the right thing. I know, I, I have no doubt. Um, I know that we do have masks that Kelly has purchased through System of Care for all the staff that have. That stuff on it, but, um, no, we will, we, that's our next step is putting together all our PPE.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll, they'll do some research.
We could do a back to school kit that's a lanyard and a mask and a water bottle, so that you're not drinking out of bubblers. Welcome back, we know this is stressful, here's a way to help all of us help each other stay safe.
Okay, so we can.
Been met, you know?
That's good, we can do that in our orientation when we've, yeah, good idea.
Yeah, just an update, we've been, we've been collecting or acquiring masks all through the summer. Every time there was a free mask giveaway, uh, through a number of different organizations, actually the state. Uh, we've pretty much, uh, took advantage of that at a high level for all our schools. So we need to get a, how many we got and then we need to know how many we want on hand, so we have been trying to do that.
Well, with all due respect, Bill, you gotta make sure they actually fit the kits properly or it's, it's pointless to put them on.
A- a- absolutely, I didn't think any otherwise, but like you said, it, it's just, we have some, we started to. Uh, for those who will fit, I agree.
And for, um, additional nursing staff, you think we can find him?
Well, we'll work on this, we'll, we gotta figure out where and when we need them, yes. But no, I don't think we'll find one, cause, yeah, I don't, it's gonna be impossible.
They want additional nursing staff to deal with, you know, to separate our regular nursing staff needs.
I under, I understand that.
On there, so I mean, how can we essentially say, yes, we're gonna open and we're gonna slow. Thought, have a soft opening, transition, kids in, you know, starting with. You know, our critical needs kids and kids that need to be in school, can't learn remotely for one reason or another. Can't access, um, internet, can't access student services that are needed. And, and, and tell our nurses that, well, we're not gonna tell them to buck it up, what do we do? Isn't that a dead end right there for this plan?
No.
Do you wanna speak to that at all? I mean, I don't know if, if, if our nursing staff is looking for. It's supplemental staff in each building, which is essentially three nurses. Temporarily while COVID is, is doing for, for specifically dealing with COVID related issues. How do we get, find those people?
Well, I, at the high school, we added on to our athletic trainer position for just this purpose. To help assist in the COVID screening, testing, being in the building more, being available more. To help facilitate things that the nurse will need.
So are you saying at the high school, we won't need an additional nurse, even though that's what is asked for in the plan?
Well, that, that was a recommenda, recommendation, Jess, and, and the number was two. So, so with that, with the athletic trainer at the high school, in a, in a perfect world. Uh, one more nurse, it would be ideal. Now, it sounded like the nurses had, i- if they, if they're given the green light for that additional nurse. Cause we have the athletic director in the budget. They, they have, they, they have some options, is kind of the vibe I got from them when we talked Thursday, Friday.
I guess one of my questions would be, does it have to be an RN nurse? Can it be someone who's working at a lower licensure level?
Yep.
You know, clearly if you've decided an athletic trainer has the necessary training to carry that out. Then I don't think we need to hire an RN, I think we need to hire someone who can provide that guided delegated assistance.
Well, what would the DOE say about a nursing staff that's not a nursing staff?
We wouldn't hire them as a school nurse, that's very different.
Okay, all right, I, I guess this is stuff we gotta talk about a lot of the time, but it's just, we'll get out there.
I think a good insight would be to talk to Lisa Miller, she had some good insight about this, I don't wanna speak for her, but I think she'd be helpful to speak to.
Thank you.
One, one last thing I just wanted to say about masks. I, I know that there's gonna be some percentage of parents who, you know, the idea that their students have to wear masks all day. Is really gonna turn them off from this plan. It's, and I, I get it, you know, as I, I understand, so I, I don't know that there's an answer, but I wanna raise it, I'm sure you've talked about it. Uh, significantly, but I, I think we have to acknowledge that it's, it's gonna be a factor.
And it's come up a few times in, in different presentations at different points too. If they're socially distanced, six feet or further away, they shouldn't really require wearing masks unless they're spitting on each other. You know?
Kind of gardeners.
About it that, at the end of July, at the board meeting on July twenty seventh. And I think it was, I'm gonna point my fingers, I think it was Mr. Hess. Who had, had talked about, you know, once you get below that six feet. And if they're not all facing the same direction and everything else like that, then continual mask wearing is gonna have to happen. Because that's the whole point, right? So if there's the ability that we have the air quality in the classroom and they are spaced six feet apart or more. Where it's, you know, feasible for us to do it, that might have six kids in the classroom, who knows? Because until we have a plan out there, we're not gonna know whether to have the staff and students to implement it at all. You know, so, so if we start with saying, yes, it's required to have a mask, but. The continual wear part is, is a question and I think anytime you have more than one person within. Six feet of each other, then they need to be wearing a mask. Outside of that, I don't see the, the real risk in them not wearing it continually. And I'm not by any means a professional on this, but this is what I'm hearing from our last meeting and today. So does anybody wanna chime in on that? Is it agreed that if the social distance is in, is in place? And that's six feet or more, that continual mask wearing isn't necessary?
It's true, it, it's just an added precaution for the unknowns, like. You know, is someone gonna move over, is someone facing the wrong way, is there air conditioner or fan blowing from one guy to the next? It's just an added precaution, it is deemed safe to be more than six feet away without a mask.
I would, speaking as the parent of a child who's at high risk. I would offer to you that humans want close contacts. We're talking about introducing kids back into school with their peers for the first time in months. And even on the main street creep happens. I was in a situation the other night where a perfectly lovely person is having a conversation with me. And I kept taking steps back and back and back because they were not wearing a mask. And with all due respect, the mask isn't about protecting them from me, it's about protecting me from them. And I, you know, I think we head down a wicked slippery slope. If we have a board mandate that says masks will be worn in our building. And then we start throwing in a whole bunch of different exceptions about why not. I think it's far better to have a plan that allows mask breaks. And sets really clear expectations and, you know, Kristen has chatted it in already into the chat. If, if parents are that much in objection to adhering to a relatively simple intervention. We've already talked a lot about the fact that there is absolutely choice built into this plan.
Right.
And they don't, they can choose to not send their children to a school where they're forced to wear a mask, if that's what they object to. But as a parent of a kid who's at risk, I, you know, there's a huge, we're asking for a huge amount of trust. When we reopen these schools, I have to now trust that eleven hundred kids and their guardians are actually doing things at home. That they say they're doing when they complete that screening. And that's asking an awful lot for me, when the wrong decision or a person who is operating with less than high integrity. Could put my kid in an ICU and potentially kill her. So, you know, I think we have to think very carefully about what slope we wanna walk down as a district.
I, I wanna add just one piece, just before the New Hampshire guidelines, uh, were published by, uh, the Department of Education. Um, the Commissioner of Education wrote an op ed, uh, to the union leader, um, that preceded it. Um, I think it by, by a day. Um, and he accurately articulated the idea that a lot of the success. Of school, uh, reopening plans is dependent upon the child's ability. To do what it is that we're asking them to do. And we know that kids make mistakes, uh, they're learning along the way. Um, and we, we have to spend time teaching them. We're hoping families spend time, uh, even before that, teaching them. Um, but the reality is that the reliability of mitigation strategies is placed in the hands of young children. Um, and we know that there's not going to be one hundred percent reliability. And so I go back to conversations I've had that a lot of what we're talking about is an exercise in probability. The things, the mitigation strategies that are put in place, how frequently, um, the duration, the location. Um, the intensity, um, all increases or decreases the probability of transmission. And, and, and in my book, that's how I look at it.
No, I, I think that's a good, a, a good stance to take, I mean, it's, uh, you know, you, you look at how. I mean, we, we had our last board meeting in person and half of us weren't wearing our mask correctly all the time, you know? And we're the, we're the, you know, we're the leaders of the district, right? So are the first graders going to consistently follow? I mean, we'll work on it, obviously, but like you said, Mike, it's a, it's a probability and a best effort at the end of the day.
And as Kristen said too, we can't have like half, half-hearted, so, so to speak. It's mask continually with these structured time rates and I'm fine with that. I just wanted, because I have heard a couple of different times.
It's gonna be an issue, yeah.
Then that, you know, well, two to three feet this or six feet this and, and where the flow's going. And students facing forward and the air quality and everything like that, but I'm perfectly fine with that, Kristen. As long as we are all on the same page, that's good.
I believe the teachers will appreciate that as well. I think that we need to move on to the next area, if that's okay. Um, instructions, Steve and Shelley, we're gonna talk a little bit about the, um, the professional development that's happening. And then Shelley, a little bit about special ed.
Okay, I know earlier there was several references to some questions that all, that was a long time ago, so I, I might've forgotten some of it. So I'll say a few things and then you can follow up again, jolt my memory. Trying to inject a little bit of levity here. Really, really what, what our, our committee on, in just broad terms and we, the, the, the things that we talked about are, are in the document. Uh, but a, a lot of, a lot of our work, uh, here recently has been around the, the preparation for teachers to teach. Online, I almost said remote, Scott, online learning. Um, and it's, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's important that the work that we do with our online learning program. Is done in, in the, in the framework, in the context of the broader goal of a lot of the words I've heard tonight, equity. Equal access, uh, best practices, uh, all, all the things that, that we strive to do. All the time when we're teaching, so, you know, so what we're looking at with this, this group of teachers. We, we had our first meeting today, seventeen teachers, five teacher leaders, uh, several administrators. We have a couple more, uh, formal meetings with the whole group scheduled this week. And then, uh, these teachers are going to work, uh, in ver, at various times over the next couple of weeks. To finalize the plan to support our teachers for improved practices and online learning. So what do we mean by that? We know, we know that, we know that we need, teachers need to be proficient in whole group instruction online. They need to be, uh, proficient in small group instruction, but online. Uh, they need to, they need to be, be able to teach students one-on-one, but online. Uh, they need, they need to be able to, to deliver our balanced liter, literacy program. They need, they need to be able to, to deliver our balanced literacy program online, and so on and so on. I guess my point is that, that what we're really focusing on is how do we, how do we use this technology to do what we need to be doing anyway? And we realize it's gonna be a bigger, a bigger challenge. It's, nothing's gonna be normal, nothing's gonna be perfect. But I think we have a really, really gifted group of people who've shown already at a high school level in engaging students and organizing and delivering very effective online instruction. So those are the things we'll be doing. How do we teach our Bridges math? How do we do some of our assessments? And then I think another thing we, we talk about really, really critical start today is this, this general idea of assessing students' learning. Where are they? Where are they compared to where we wish, where they would be in a normal year? And, you know, and where do we go from there? And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna comment on one more thing, and I'm gonna stop. Yes, we are, we are gonna have to, you know, in, even without COVID, we, we, our curriculum needs to be aligned. And I think we're getting closer and closer. Wes and Les are working closer than ever. And that's, that's the culture. We, culture's really important. And I haven't been here very long, but the culture I hear from the teachers at all levels now is, is a culture of, we want, we want to work together. We want to collaborate. We want to make, we want to learn from each other. And so certainly that'll be critical as we look at, okay, how do we, how do we make this seamless? If a student has to go home, has to stay home and go to, to remote or online instruction, how do we keep that as least disruptive as possible? And that culture of collaboration and the, and the curriculum structures we're building will be helpful with that. I'm gonna stop there, let Shelley comment, and, and certainly Stephanie's been a big part of this committee as well, and I'll stop with that.
Yeah, in front, from the special ed standpoint, I think, I think for us, we're just waiting to have the plan finalized and to get some guidance on what is the actual day-to-day instruction going to look like. As Marion stated earlier, when we looked at the different color code options and how we would have students within the buildings, if you look, the special ed piece, it's a priority for us to get as many of the kids back into the building as we can for instruction. With that being said, that's also with parent choice. We have many parents who are not comfortable sending their kids back into the building for various health reasons or other reasons, and we're going to do our best to work with them, to be creative, to figure out how we'll provide our services. Working on a special ed-related service guidance document for the teachers and for the related service providers to review, to have some guidance when they come back in. There's a lot of questions still around special education. There's a lot of questions about how we, how we got creative, about how we're gonna provide transportation on those off-schedules. A lot to think about. So once we have this plan nailed down and finalized, we'll be all set to move forward.
One thing I do want to mention, too, is the Unified Arts are very much in our planning, in our thinking. And that's gonna require some other conversations in addition to the group that's meeting currently. And frankly, some of the things that we'll be doing with the Unified Arts are gonna be driven a little bit by how our, how our program looks in terms of the model that we're using and which of our teachers are able to return. Some of the, some of the same question we have with everything. But the Unified Arts, it presents a little different challenge as well. But I want to reiterate that they're very much a part of this, of this work.
Any questions for Steve or Shelley?
Yeah, I've got some. So speaking about the Unified Arts and specifically with the band instruments, are we looking at the studies about aerosol production from instruments? Bell cover mask, for example, are we looking into those possibilities?
The National Federation, Herb, has, is a, is this national organization that does, that does provide a lot of guidance. I've looked at some of those documents already, and they, and they, they are providing some guidance with musical instruments, with, with groups, vocal groups, those types of, those types of a program. You know, I think, I think the, I think someone said that the music, you're gonna have to either be a string player or a percussionist. We can't anybody blowing on instruments. Well, it's, it's not quite that extreme. There, there are ways around it. But what we do know is like everything else we do, it's not gonna be the way it was for a while. We'll have to do the best we can.
Okay. When we talk about teachers doing remote, you know, online instruction, are we envisioning those teachers when they're providing online instruction? Are they gonna be in our school buildings? Or are they doing this from their homes?
I, for, for, in terms of where they are, from my perspective, doesn't matter. They're gonna be teaching online. So what we're, from my perspective, what I'm focusing on is making sure wherever they are, that they're able to provide quality instruction with the online piece.
Right.
So that, that piece of it is, is not quite as critical in and of itself.
Okay. But of course, I mean, we have to have a way of, of understanding what an effective online teaching environment is. And I would argue that, that, you know, of course, we were, we were winging it in the spring, you know?
Yeah.
And we, and we have more time to prepare now.
Yeah.
There were clearly some cases where it wasn't optimal, so.
Yeah, and I think there's a, there's a lot of supporting work that has to go with it. We're gonna have to develop some standards for what, what a, a day looks like in remote, in online learning. And, and I think, I think we all know that we're not, we're gonna have to look at the time. We ask various, it's gonna have to be developmentally appropriate. And there's lots and lots of issues here. There's gonna have to be some equity standards. The teachers are teaching solely online versus those are teaching in person and so on and so on. There's a lot of details here.
One, one last question I had regarding instruction is what, what role do our teacher leaders play in, in this plan?
They, the, the idea here with the model that we're, we're working from is, and the reason for bringing in so many teachers is to help the teacher leaders plan and deliver the, the staff development when teachers come back. It's gonna be too much for five people to do. And frankly, it's, it's a matter of the synergy of the group, learning from each other. And the teacher leader's role will be to help facilitate it, to help plan it, to work with those teachers to make sure that it's successful.
Okay, thank you.
And to monitor it going forward.
Okay, so the next area was transportation, and I believe that's been covered through the school's presentation. And then, then along with transportation is operations. And Chris, do you want to just briefly talk a little bit about our Primex webinar, et cetera, that, what we've learned?
So Marion and I participated in a webinar put on by Primex, who is your insurance company. And, and I'll be participating on Wednesday in another one put on by our law firm. But essentially, we talked about what would and would not qualify for paid leave underneath, under the old school Family Medical Leave Act, under the expanded Family Medical Leave Act, underneath, that came with the Families First Coronavirus Act. What would qualify under the, just go ahead. Another one is called the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. And what wouldn't qualify for any of those things? And for example, fear of returning to work because of COVID-19 doesn't qualify for paid leave. But that would then, and trigger us then to ask the employee about more, to dig further about what made them fearful of returning to work. And so Christine Roy in the HR office would do that through a confidential conversation with the employee. And if there's an underlying health concern, we would encourage the employee to have their physician fill out an ADA form where we would offer some reasonable accommodations. And a reasonable accommodation might be, be moved into a remote teaching position. I did find online a flow chart that helps with navigating that very complex legal minefield potentially. And so the plan is to use a flow chart like that when we're having these conversations with employees so we can document how it is that we came to the decision. And so that we can be mindful of being equitable, is a word we're hearing a lot tonight. But that, you know, that we're being fair and objective in making the decisions and, and documenting the decision process. So other than that, I mean, there's no real new development since the last time we met. Just we continue to educate ourselves and to be sure that we can document all the decisions that we make.
Thanks, Chris. Does anybody have any questions there? Next, we have tech, Jeremy?
Yep, so a lot of our work that we've done has just been making sure that we're flexible to support whatever direction the district goes. We want to be able to successfully support the three phases, you know, whether we're full in district, whether we're in a hybrid, or whether we're in a full remote setting. I want to be able to help teachers navigate the data, data security privacy issues with dealing with some of these new applications and new learning platforms. And overall, we want to make sure we're, we're staying safe as we're doing technical support. Some of the guidelines that we kind of, recommendations we offered out was is to get staff and students their devices early. So we recommended that staff, you know, pick up their laptops, which are available for them now by the middle of August. And then we recommended that, you know, we get in early, you know, about two weeks ahead of instruction for the Chromebook rollout. And a lot of that depends on what, how the schools want to organize that. So I've seen what the schools have in their timelines. I think that's appropriate. And the reason we want to do that is we're gonna be pushing out, you know, 1,100 Chromebooks and well over 200 staff devices. So we want to make sure we get everybody on boarded as quickly and as efficiently as possible and try to mitigate any of those technical issues that are barriers before learning actually starts. So that's what a bulk of our work is, a bulk, bulk of our work of, you know, what we're doing going forward, so.
And we were really fortunate to get ahead of the curve when we ordered all of those Chromebooks when we did, because many districts are not able to get them now.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Jeremy, have we?
Chromebook for every K-312 student.
Correct.
Jeremy, at our, at our last meeting, we talked about the feasibility of building out virtual machines for specialized, you know, like CAD or, you know, the art stuff. Is that still something in play if we either scheduleize, can't accommodate those kinds of classes, or we have to go online?
Hopefully, I mean, I think hopefully that, you know, with a, with a hybrid model, they'll be using the labs in person. You know, there's a little bit of an expense to try to go out to like Amazon Web Services and.
Right.
To do that, specifically when you're trying to get the horsepower to do some of the, you know, some of the high-end graphics and whatnot, and what that would cost in, in the Amazon web.
Yeah.
Honestly, I, I, I think I gave you this answer the last time, too, and it's kind of the same answer is, is that until I know a definite plan of how the, you know, how the board wants to proceed, I, you know, there's only so much time and effort that we can put into the things that we're constantly doing here already. So once, once we know a full plan, then if we need to spin up some Amazon Web Services or something like that, we can really get into the costs and, and go down that road. But I'm, I'm hoping we can do a hybrid.
Yeah.
A hybrid approach to that.
Okay, yeah. No, I just want to make sure it's still on the radar.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So I had a couple of questions, too. We know that it was a small percentage that didn't actually have access to connectivity and internet access. Do we anticipate having connection for them? And how do we do that with hotspots or various things that we can purchase? Is that a possibility? And, and I'm just curious to know if there is a cost factor for staff and students that just can't afford to connect and don't have internet access at their homes for their remote learning, and what we can talk and do about that?
I, I believe that was kind of the point of the schools, you know, accommodating the, the students that have internet connectivity issues into the school. They're, they're the more at-risk students because they don't have connectivity. So I think that would be, you know, they would be in, in the school.
Right, but you're still gonna have a percentage of those students that don't have connectivity that are not, their parents, families aren't comfortable them being in person.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's a whole lot that we as the district are gonna be able to do unless we want to go down the road of providing internet access for, for students. And even so, a lot of these students live in, in very rural areas that they may not have access to an actual data service that, that is gonna be, you know, conducive to online, a true, true synchronous online learning. So I think for those students, the more we can get in the building, we have plenty of internet bandwidth in the building to support all of their needs.
Right, so ultimately, we'll be doing some, some of our in-remote is gonna be in-person, but it's, it's online learning still. But having, basically getting back to what Kristin had said earlier, you're almost, you know, providing the daycare in an adult present. They don't necessarily have to be a staff member that's certified in the, the online courses that they're taking.
Yeah, Patsy coined the term online learning with in-person support. Right, Patsy? Yeah.
Correct.
Hey, and Jess, just to, to put my Rotarian hat on. So in the spring, the Rotary team with the Northern Forest Organization to secure Straight Talk, Franklin Mobile Hotspot devices, as well as the data necessary, and also supplied data refill cards for those devices. The Rotary just wrote a massive grant and was successful in getting it to continue this initiative to help families out in need. And, you know, I helped to facilitate it, and we gave out 25 devices, and I didn't hear any complaints. So, you know, we do have some options not associated with the school district directly that to help some families out.
We do have to be careful that when we do things like hotspots with the district, if we're the district providing it, then we need to stay CIPA compliant. So we need to make sure that we're doing those, you know, the filtering. Yeah, we gotta make sure we're filtering that content as, as we would any other district device. And, you know, the Chromebooks have GoGuardian on them anyways, but we can't guarantee what else they're gonna do with that hotspot. And if we're providing it as a, as a district, I think that's gonna get us into some, a little bit of hot water, depending if it's not filtered, which is what those services like KJ do, which, you know, we certainly could go down that avenue, but it, it's, it's quite costly.
It's costly, and it's really not an effective means of governing what materials are used on our books.
And the other, the other part you have is, is you still are, you know, you still have areas that don't have full data cell coverage. So, you know, to get a, a, a great connection is, is, you know, that, that is conducive to the online learning is, is still tough in a lot of areas.
Jessica, in, in, you know, part of that process as well, I understand that some of the, the governor's SRF funds are going towards expanding some broadband connections in, in rural parts of the state. I did not necessarily see Whitefield or Dalton or on that list, but I think if, if we're working with our state legislators on, hey, we need some expansion here. It's not gonna solve all the issues, but every little bit helps.
Yep.
Very good point.
Okay, so next is wellness and social emotional learning. That's Kelly and Cheryl.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say Cheryl and I have been working closely with a very small but dedicated team of mainly district-level people to discuss SEL and wellness in our district. And we feel like we have a, a pretty solid plan based on whatever reintegration model we go with. And really, SEL at its essence is supporting conditions in which our students and our staff feel ready and supported to engage in learning. And as both of the elementary schools and the high school plan indicated, SEL and building those foundational relationships, community. building those foundational relationships, community buildings, setting out routines and expectations were part of the initial plan for both elementary schools and the high school. So I feel we have a pretty solid S E L focus going in to our reintegration model. This is certainly a district that is ahead of the curve when it comes to S E L and have been working in this area for quite some time. That being said, we do have a few recommendations. We're certainly going to focus the first six weeks of school on the social emotional development and learning, including trauma sensitive tools for both our student body and our staff. And this will include intentional positive relationship building with our teachers and faculty, getting to know their students. All things, as I think Mr. Cronin mentioned, happen naturally when we are in schools, but we are certainly going to step the focus up very early on in making connections with our students and family systems. We, we also feel that when we talk about S E L, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about skills to support our students in the mitigation of trauma and, you know, possible mental health conditions. And, and currently, we're talking about sort of our tier three needs and the mental health needs. So one of our recommendations is the assessment of mental health needs should certainly be a priority. And we have a system that we will be using called the Sabers to help rate those mental health needs. It's a data point among many data points that we'll be using. Another part of our recommendation plan is to support our staff in professional development around social emotional learning, mental health, trauma sensitive schools, all things that we have in motion in this district. But we will continue that particularly in the first two weeks of our plan. We've talked about potential home visiting for identified high risk students by designated staff members, if feasible. And we've also talked about the, the self-care for our, our, our faculty and staff and that wellness piece. And our opening day speaker is actually going to be doing a presentation on educator self-care, really recognizing that this time and particularly the planning and the rollout of this plan has been, you know, immensely stressful to everybody on this committee. And we, we don't want to lose sight of that. Going into school, our educators right now need a little more T L C. So asking them to perform kind of high level integration skills may need some support. And so one of the things that we can do from an S E L lens is to not create and add any more stress to teachers and our system. And that's what we have sort of embedded within our plan. Cheryl, I don't know if you have any additional thoughts or comments?
I just wanted to add, Kelly, Karen Miller had put something in chat and I'm not sure if she's asking you, but if you did a presentation today, could you please share your slides with Karen Miller who's doing up to back up the minutes of this meeting?
I, I don't, I don't think that's, yeah.
I don't know what you're referring to exactly.
I'm not, I'm not thinking that's for us.
I think it's just in general, probably. So.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah. And it probably would be helpful to get those presentations, like the first one emailed.
We didn't have, well, if all the buildings that presented out tonight with whatever slides they used, maybe that's, yep, just in general, she just posted. So sorry about that, Kelly. I thought you was
Oh, that's okay.
Specifically to the S E L piece.
Yeah. The other thing I should add is that we have already begun this work this summer. We have been focusing on staff wellness this summer. And we have, we've had a pretty robust staff wellness series offering from yoga and mindfulness to P D on trauma sensitive schools to take and make craft kits, all things to really support our staff, which again is, is a piece of S E L that we cannot overlook. You know, our staff need to be in the, in the ready position and feel supported to do this work before we just thrust upon them, you know, all these new measures that we've, we've spent the last three hours talking about. So, you know, we're looking at S E L from the adult lens as well as student lens and the family system, community lens. And so, yeah, some of that work has definitely been ongoing. We are actually doing, we just did a, a pop chart check-in. It's a universal S E L strategy from one of our mindful practices consultants. We're hoping that's a universal tool that particularly our elementary schools grab hold of. Some have already participated in that practice. It's really just, as we've talked about many times tonight, checking in with our students and really intentionally checking in, not, you know, not just what did you like about summer, but what do you like to learn about, things I should know about you, really building those positive relationships and, and having students feel safe with, with the teachers and the adults in their lives upon the reintegration of school.
Thanks, Kelly.
I would like to add to or ask, and it's probably something that we won't be able to kind of grab hold of the data until we implement a plan and, and do actually open school. But of our, a significant proportion of our student bodies are tier three eligible, so to speak. I guess, I don't know what the terminology to use would be better, but since schools have closed in March, obviously, there's been a huge decline in some of the things like reporting of abuse and neglect, things of that nature to Department of Child and Youth Services, a huge drop over from, because these kids that are in critical situations haven't been able to speak to an adult that they feel safe to speak to. Do you anticipate a, a, a big percentage of need in the tier three category?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Jessica. We actually do anticipate an increased need. That being said, we tried to get in front of it this summer. We stipend eight staff members with behavioral health, especially, you know, specialized training to support students throughout the summer, those tier three students and even some of our tier two students, recognizing that tier two students may now become tier three needs. So for the past six weeks, we have been providing virtual counseling support of our students through system of care funding and certainly stepped up our behavioral health efforts over the summer with that recognition that, you know, some of these students that are tier two, tier three need that continual lifeline. And we, we definitely will continue with that support. And that's that sort of split between the S E L equation. You know, S E L really is tier one. It's, you know, skills to mitigate, yeah, you know, concerns down the road. But right now, we're seeing we need, you know, tier one training and tier one skill development, but we also have sort of the mental health needs through the trauma lens, which is definitely more of a tier three. And so our committee is looking at all those needs. How do we support tier one? How do we support the adult S E L needs? And how do we also look at the sort of tier three critical needs, mental health needs?
How do we count everybody?
Kelly, now, was it also, is it also correct that in that list, we also recommended the, the potential for some added support? Yes. Whether it be school counselors or clinicians? Yes. Yeah. Like, you know, like the school nurses, I think, we're recognizing the potential for an increased need at that tier three level, just as you mentioned, Jessica. You know, right now, we have two clinical social workers in our district and two school psychologists in our district who primarily do assessments and help with the I E P developments and, you know, behavior sort of screenings. But there is that potential, again, not knowing what the data is going to look like, that we may need more clinicians in the area to deal with true counseling needs. So that's, that is something that we put in the, our recommendations, a potential for increased support in the behavioral health camp, particularly around tier three clinical needs.
I'm going to jump in here real quick. I need the board to take a quick vote and give me a motion so that we can continue the meeting. It's 10:02.
So moved.
Moved by her. Who seconded? Sorry.
That was Greg.
Thank you, Greg Odell. All those in favor to continue this meeting?
Do you have to roll call that, Jess?
Roll call. I'll get there. Jay Brady?
Yes.
Room Murphy?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. G Odell?
Yes.
Don't sound so enthusiastic.
Sure.
Dave Van Berg and Budo.
Sure.
That's unanimous. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to add one last thing, Jessica, on the S E L. And I, I believe that both Scott and Mike talked about this early on in the presentation, that S E L in the schools will look very different in an in-person model. You know, we used to have wellness centers or we have wellness centers where we had students exiting and entering throughout the day needing, you know, breaks, regulatory opportunities, some of which include physical touch from, you know, like hugging for the little kids, sitting in beanbag chairs, accessing, you know, space among people, people in small cohorts. That's going to look very, very different. So, you know, that's one thing we, we want to message that if students are coming back or parents are coming back with the idea that they have, they will have their S E L needs met, in fact, that might not happen. You know, the, the wellness centers, we've yet to determine what that's going to look like. We just ordered a very large order of action-based learning equipment, which most of you have probably seen posted on the website. We don't even know if we can use that, you know, because all of that equipment is in very close proximity in the wellness center or, you know, in the sort of the wellness labs that we were creating prior to COVID in very close proximity to each other. We need a lot of deep cleaning. So S E L is definitely a priority, but it will look very different than it did in February and very different than where we thought we were going with the A B L equipment.
I think we're all. Yeah. I think we're all across the board. In person and remote is not going to look anything like it did on every domain.
So on that note, Mel, food service?
Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Good. So if, if we are going with remote, it would look a lot like it did in March, except we wouldn't have the seamless summer option. Well, from March to June, there hasn't been a waiver approved by USDA for all free meals for students. So the free, reduced and paid options are still there for any parents or any students that want meals. And hopefully we deliver them to their houses like we did this spring. The hybrid scenario is going to be a little difficult, but we'll get it done. We'll serve meals to the classrooms. Breakfast will be served as they come in the door. It'll be a grab and go in a bag already. We'll use rosters instead of tin pads because we don't want students touching them. And I'm, from what I'm hearing tonight, it'll be mainly classroom, no cafeteria. So we may need some extra help for that, which I'm hoping some of the paraprofessionals can help us deliver to the classrooms, you know, with a roster system. Jeremy's going to help me set up a, a Google form so that we can, students can order their meal in the morning. So we'll know what to deliver. All food will be served in some kind of a closed foam container. So if we, for the first two weeks, everything will be cold. If we decide to go with hot, then it'll be in a three section enclosed container. Silverware will be wrapped. Hopefully I can purchase it wrapped, but if not, we'll wrap it along with napkins, straws. No students will be allowed to serve themselves at all. Everything will be given to them. Of course, my food service staff will wear aprons, masks and gloves. And we still may need to deliver, even with the hybrid model, we still may need to deliver meals to the homes for parents and students that request it. So we'll have to work that out with the bus company and administration. But most of what I need to do, I can't do until there's a plan that's been decided. So then I'll work with the principals in each school to see how we're going to get it done. But we will.
Thanks, Mel. Anybody have any questions for Mel?
No, just a huge thank you, and we appreciate you so very much and all the service.
Yeah. It was, the spring was very impressive.
And always with a smile.
I am. Had a couple of rough days, but I did it. Dave did it.
Stephanie, do you have anything you'd like to add as far as the N E A perspective or any concerns or comments that you would like to share?
Yes, I do, in fact.
Thank you.
Sure. So what I have to share this evening is not necessarily something that you have yet to hear, but I hope that it offers a little bit of light into the thought processes of kind of what's been going on behind the scenes with teachers. So first, I want to just kind of tell you a little bit about who I am because I feel like most of you kind of know each other and maybe the folks who are watching don't necessarily know who I am. But I'm a teacher leader at the Whitefield School. I'm also a lot of other things. I'm the mom of three kids, two of whom go to Whitefield School. I'm a wife, a daughter, a niece, an aunt, a granddaughter, a cousin, a friend, a community member. Tonight, though, as I'm speaking with you, I'm speaking as the president of the White Mountains Education Association. And the W M E A is the teachers' union that is affiliated with N E A New Hampshire and the National Education Association. Our union is made up of educators from throughout S A U thirty-six, educators who have bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, various certifications, and in many cases, credits beyond those degrees and certifications as well. We are community members ourselves. We have families to provide for and families to return to. Many of our family members, and in fact, many of us, have underlying health conditions which put us at greater risk for having adverse reactions to COVID-19. With this in mind, we listened a few weeks ago when the governor released the state guidelines for reopening. And my phone, my email, my various social media accounts, they all started going crazy. These educators were coming to me for guidance and advice, asking me questions that I did not have the answers to. As a member of the task force, I have sat in on meetings and participated with my various hats on, trying to come up with a plan that will please all the stakeholders, a plan that will keep safety and health as the top priorities. With the unveiling of the 2020, 2021 reopening plan this evening, our members still have questions, questions that I still don't have the answers to. To be sure, there is much more work that lies ahead. With that said, I would like it to be made clear and to state that the W M E A continues to advocate for the guidelines that are being recommended by N E A New Hampshire. Those guidelines include fully funding all health and safety protocols, including providing appropriate P P E and ensuring that all H VAC units within our buildings are up to standard. We advocate for a phased reopening as We advocate for a phased reopening as this plan allows. And, um, we also agree that science-based practices to properly mitigate the spread of COVID-19, including a mask mandate 100% of the time while in buildings, take place. And not just when social distancing cannot be maintained. We advocate for health screenings and proper hygiene. We need to ensure that families have options for learning delivery methods. And we will support a plan that ensures that educators are not asked to teach both remotely and in person at the same time. And we would like to make certain that every teacher and student has access not only to an appropriate device for instruction, but also has access to a reliable internet connection. We have been and we will continue to be here for the children of this community. But we want to be sure that the steps that are laid out in this or any other plan, first and foremost, are in place to protect the health and safety of our staff, our students and the families that they go home to each evening. Thanks, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Nice job, Steph. Does anybody have any questions for Stephanie?
I think we're all set. Thank you, Stephanie.
So, um, finally, um, I just wanted to quickly go over the format for tomorrow night. Um, it's going to be a Google Meet meeting, and that's going to be up to 250 participants. That link will not go over social media, although we're pretty sure that Google Meet does not get bombed like Zoom does. Um, there is, there is now up on the website a Google form for the community to be listing their questions and concerns about this plan. And, um, tomorrow night, uh, Patsy's going to moderate for us, facilitate. She's going to be seeing the questions and be stating the questions, and then the questions will be directed to either the district leadership team, myself, or the board. Um, as Jess said earlier, we don't have to answer the questions. We have to take it under advisement. But if we do have answers, that would be a good thing to do. Um, um, my question is, um, we don't need to go over the plan again first, do we? No, because I think that everybody had adequate, um, time to look at it tomorrow, too.
And it's out there in, you know, the draft form that we have, and, um, I think tomorrow is just really taking in all that public comment and then the board to kind of deliberate with that after, after that happens before we actually, um, come to a conclusion and approve a plan.
Yep.
Can, can we get access to the Google Form responses prior to the meeting? So that, just as board members, so we can kind of see what?
I think that it's locked out so that it didn't get, I know only two people have access to it because they didn't want that data to get messed up. Is that correct? Because once you go in there, you can make a mistake and mess it up. Scott, are you there? I know that was your concern.
Yeah, with Google Forms, once something gets deleted, it gets deleted, it's not like an other Google, um, doc where you can go back to previous versions.
Yeah, right, right.
So it gets, it gets a little nasty. I could, I could create, um, like a PDF of it in the afternoon and send it to you.
Yeah.
Of what's in there.
Yeah, yeah, I don't need the, you know, I don't, I don't care about the raw, like, form data.
That's a good idea, Scott, yeah.
It would just be nice to see what some of the responses are prior to the, the meeting.
Scott, you can also make a copy of that, of the, the sheet uh, with all the responses on it and just share the copy with the, to the board if, if that's easier.
Okay, yeah, I, I just looked a few minutes ago and I think there's about 15 responses so far, and they're all, they're all legitimate questions, and I think that we're going to see a lot more come in. Um, uh, some of them are pretty specific and without having a plan, it will be, I think it's going to be tough to address some of them, but I think, I think it's good that everybody sees them and we're, and we put that out there that these questions are coming in, because people are thinking, thinking bigger picture and thinking about their kids and those are the answers that we have to have eventually, so.
Okay. It also would be helpful tomorrow to have, uh, just a copy of the, the slides that you were sharing at the very beginning of the presentation, the, the three principles, so it'd be nice to have.
Marian, do you want me to share that out so they can, they can view, the board can view the, the slideshow? Okay, I'll do that right now.
That would, that would be great, because there were some more details there that weren't actually in the draft plans.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you. And what, this is a question for Jess, but what, what is our format for tomorrow for trying, you know, to make changes to the plan at a board level? Is it motions and?
Yep. So as Marian said originally, we had, um, I was going to read kind of a chat dialogue that was coming in from the public, but now we have, um, Patty Angworth moderating those for the public session piece, and we can go back and forth. Um, we had allotted an hour for that. If we need more time, that's fine, too. We'll just take a vote after the first hour of the, the public informational session. Um, and then as far as, um, the board discussing what we have taken in both tonight and tomorrow, that will happen after the public input session is complete. And amendments or, or recommendations, um, we can go piece by piece if it's something, you know, um, and, and come to an agreement between the board members as far as what we're actually going to make a motion to vote. I really think there will be some amendments to the plan as presented. So, um, right after that public informational kind of input session, that's when we'll talk about those amendments and, and, and anything that any board member wants to, you know, put out there. Um, I think we should have, you know, or have conversations that, not to say to have a board meeting via email, because we can't do that. Um, but if Herb, you are adamant about particular things, certainly send them as soon as you're adamant about them. If it's well before the meeting, that's fine. And I would say that for every board member. If there's a piece of the plan that you're absolutely can't settle your mind around or have an idea that's alternative to the plan that was presented tonight, send it to me individually and, and we'll have kind of a short agenda of our own after the public session.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I know that everybody would be very appreciative if there was a, a vote so that we could move forward. I think we can all live with it. Yep.
And it's important to, to stress, too, we, you know, the plan, the, the plan is, uh, almost conceptual in itself because we, we don't have the answers. Then we're not going to have the answers tomorrow before we vote on a plan. What we're voting on is the conceptual idea of either starting 100% remote, the hybrid, the plan that was presented to us to a T with, or with some amendments to the dates, to, to the structure of it, or any piece of it. Um, or, or as we heard Littleton tonight coming in and let's go in person 100%, but, um, obviously, I, I know that's not going to be easy, but, um, so we can make those modifications tomorrow.
Okay.
And we have to vote on them with the understanding that a lot of the questions aren't going to be.
Yeah.
We're putting the cart before the horse right now. And, and we don't know what families are going to decide as well as staff members if they're, if, we don't know those, we don't have those numbers until we have a plan, so it's catch 22 a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, but I think we can, we can solidify a vote or an approval with that conceptual idea of this is how it's going to go. And then we're going to find out if we can implement it. Unfortunately, we're not going to find out if we can implement it before we vote.
Yeah. I mean, I, the reality of the situation is that no plan is going to make everyone happy. I mean, it's just impossible, so.
Well, that's in normal times, too, Herb.
Oh, of course, yeah. And this is even worse. I did have one just general question. Do, do we need to adjust the school calendar? Uh, as far, or is taking into account instructional hours or anything, or?
So there are waivers, but we don't need them as far as the 180-day instructional contract, we're all good. The first thing at school is the calendar that we have. The only thing we did change was that link food piece, um, that they were going to be coming in early. That's been taken care of already on the calendar, so we don't have to change the calendar.
Okay, all right, great.
And as far as, I'm assuming that's your report, Marian.
Done.
Is there anything else you want to add to your report?
No, I do not.
We have some action items and hopefully we'll get through them fairly quickly as well.
Yes.
Over some quick, yep.
It's Greg. I, I've written down some thoughts and comments. I'm just going to say them out. I'm not looking for the presenters to respond, but just to get them out there. Get them on the radar, take a minute, I hope.
Thank you.
First thing is, um, it's clear, it's a great body of work. I want to say it's a great, a great job to everybody that presented tonight, all their teammates that helped them put this work together. Uh, I greatly appreciate the idea that they're flexible and open-minded because it's a high likelihood this will become a three-ring circus when we start having people getting sick and going in and out and all these unanticipated things that are likely. Um, the high school schedules, I just would wonder if there's anything within a high school schedule that affects accreditation for our graduates, you know, making sure everything goes smoothly as they move forward, possibly to college. Facilities covered some of the costs, but at the last meeting, it sounded to me like it might be an unbearable cost for our district to be open. Now, I don't know that that was really addressed, but there were some points taken, and I just would think we really want to stay aware. We can't afford $7 million to have our schools open, let's say, as an example. Uh, nurses, uh, the DOE, state guidelines and collective bargaining. You want to add nurses, all of those things come into play. So unless they waive state guidelines for what makes a school nurse a school nurse or an assistant, I don't know what's going on, but I would think there's a lot of detail there. Athletics, the sense of normalcy, I greatly appreciate. But I think there's no question that you need to provide for the other cro curriculars, otherwise you'll find yourself in the courts. Potentially, because you can't do for one and not for others. And then Chris brought up a thing about trying to make sure that you feel your child is safe. And I know people personally who I sit there and scratch my head and wonder how they think this way, who believe this is a hoax and nothing but politics. And those parents could in all likelihood be at home not doing any of the things we're asking them to do to safe check their children before they get sent on a bus. And potentially those kids could be infected. And so our system has to override the potential bias of individuals at home. And we have to be doubly secure to protect children at risk and staff members at risk. Just, those are my thoughts. Not looking for responses tonight, but I wanted to get them out there and on people's radar. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. One of the things, too, um, that I didn't even bring up to talk about is how, um, some of the guidelines, obviously, or all the guidelines that were, were recommendations from the Department of Education. In no place there is there any conversation about what we're requiring and how we're assessing the gaps that have already taken place and the ones that will surely be coming in the future of the education and what this curriculum actually looks like. And it may be time for this board to talk about writing up a resolution for, um, what these credit requirements are doing. We want to get our kids back at school as much as the next person, but we have to do so safely. And if we're mandated to follow these strict curriculum guidelines and credit recommend, you know, credit requirements, um, how are we doing that? You know, we'll be lucky to scratch the surface to get to the point where we're actually, you know, being able to assess what gaps exist currently at this point. So, you know, that's something that the DOE doesn't really discuss, you know, i- if there's waivers. I think overall, you know, as a country or even as a state, we have to look obviously at the safety and health and wellness of, of our staff and students first and foremost. And, and we can afford to lose some, some academic education and requirements. We can't afford to lose lives. And, and the decisions put on us locally, but we still have the mandate sent from the state.
You know, I think it's, you know, where you're going, Jess, is really important. Um, I appreciate Greg where you're coming from, too. I think we need to have a plan that is a plan that fails safe rather than fails unsafe. Uh, because that so much of this hinges on personal integrity. So much of the success of safe plans hinge on personal integrity. And I generally love the place I live. I love my community. I'm deeply invested in my community. But when I have a really quiet moment with myself and ask whether I feel like my kids are safe stepping back into our school buildings right now, that answer is still a no for me. Um, because so, so very much hinges on every single player in this equation adhering to the guidelines. And there are so many things that make that hard and make it difficult to do. I think one of the very first things we could do to really make sure that we are the innovative school district that we are known to be is to give some really serious thought to what our final measuring stick really is. If our goal, our, our true goal, the final outcome we're really shooting for is to have bodies in the schools, then we can work to that goal, but we're going to have to accept some risk. And I'm not entirely certain that we're all ready to take that risk. I am still hearing the voices of our teachers last week saying, you know, some of us are really young, we're new to our careers, we have 40 years of teaching in us. We want to teach for 40 years. But that's not going to happen if we have cardiac damage because we've been exposed to this virus in our schools. And it's not going to happen if we have deep diminished respiratory capacity. And those are some very real side effects. There's a lot of talk about the mortality rate of this virus. And the mortality rate is pretty low. It's not as low as the flu, but it's pretty low. What we're not talking a lot about is the morbidity rate, all of the other disease processes that come along with it. Um, and, and when we open the doors of our school buildings and put bodies inside those school buildings, we are asking our community, our teachers, our students, their families to accept that risk. Um, and so I just think, you know, if we etch a sketch that and we say the end goal is not necessarily bodies in buildings in a traditional classroom setting, but is instead well-facilitated, high-quality, rigorous delivery of a good education with the social supports that our communities have become accustomed to, which might mean some kids have to be in the buildings because childcare is an issue for their families, and we're open and honest about that. Then I think we can be super, super innovative. But if we're just looking at lining up kids like we saw on La Valley's plans every six feet in these little block-like formations staring at the front of the class for a teacher to teach them, that's a different level of risk that we accept. And I'm not entirely certain that I'm comfortable but supporting a plan that says that's the risk we want to buy.
Anybody else before we move on and I let everybody else that wants to leave besides my board and superintendent and Karen go? I think we're all set for the superintendent's report. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We're just going to move forward with the rest of our, um, agenda for our board meeting.
Thanks, DLT. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Marian, Marian, do you want the broadcast still going or do you want to?
Do you have to stop it?
I have to stop it, yeah, in order for it to stop.
I think that's, I think that's fine, Jeremy, so you can get going.
I don't know that, well, not if we can't give public access. We can't continue a board meeting with.
That's fine. I can, I can sit right here. There's no hurry.
Real quick, Jeremy, I appreciate it. Um, we're going to move real quick. So committee reports, um, ed program and curriculum. Um, don't have a setup meeting for that at this time, but obviously we heard from the director tonight. Um, facilities is the third Wednesday of the month. Personnel, um, as needed, we're going to be responding by, what did we say, Marian? October?
October 15th, yeah.
October 15th to negotiate teachers' contract. Um, policy, we're going to set up, um, as soon as we can. Um, safety, I don't believe there's anything on the books there, Herb. Um, and strategic planning is not reporting out at this meeting. CT renovation advisory committee is just that right now, an advisory committee that we're keeping open. See what happens there. Superintendent's evaluation will, um, come when we cease remote meeting, or at least we get past this plan and vote and maybe pass the first day of school or something and things settle down a little bit. Um, I was going to ask to sit and schedule a meeting tonight, but I can do that via email. I do have an interested potty in the vacancy for the Whitefield seat who I've spoken with. Um, and we'll just have to get a board interview together. We'll do. Um, and we'll just have to get a board interview together. We'll do that remotely and I'll set up the time and date. I think maybe sometime next week. We could, we can all just take a deep breath the rest of this week of what we got coming ahead. Um, action agenda item one, could I have a motion for the following item? Now, I gotta find it. To approve the following coaching and volunteer nominations provided sports will be offered. Can I have someone move that?
So moved.
Moved by Herb.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kristen. So, um, that's for White Mountain Regional High School, David Cameron Golf, Anthony Ramos, cross-country running, Aaron Gross, bass fishing, volunteer, middle school, LES, WES, Robert Simpson, and girls soccer. Any questions, comments, ready to vote by roll call? Jay Brady?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
G Odell?
Yes.
H Randall?
Yes.
K Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
That's unanimous by roll call vote. Action agenda item two, could I have a motion to authorize the superintendent of schools, Dr. Marion Anastasia, to be the authorized business officer for the White Mountain Regional School District credit cards?
So moved.
Moved by Kristen, seconded by Greg.
Sure.
Okay. Questions, comments, ready to vote? Vote by roll call. Jay Brady?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
G Odell?
Yes.
H Randall?
Yes.
K Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
That's unanimous by roll call vote. Action agenda item three. Could I have a motion to accept the following resignation, Amy Parsons, fifth grade teacher, LES, effective August 6, 2020?
So moved.
Seconded.
Greg?
Yep.
Moved by Greg Odell.
Seconded.
By Herb Randall. Questions, comments with appreciation, I believe 18 years in the district.
Cool.
Vote, all those in favor by roll call rather. Jay Brady?
Yes.
Jay Murphy?
Yes.
G Odell?
Yes.
H Randall?
Yes.
K Van Bergen Budo?
Yes.
That's unanimous by roll call vote. I think that's it, unless anybody has anything. Meeting adjourned 10:35. Thank you very much, everyone.